... of Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. Please join the board in a salute to the flag.
Hug allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undervowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anthony?
Pursuant to the Chapter Two of Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29th, 2023, this meeting is conducted via remote means and in person. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: Tune into PAC TV government access channels Comcast Channel 15 or Verizon Channel 47 and watch the meeting as it is aired live or watch the meeting live on the PAC TV website, pactv.org. Members of the public who wish to participate during the meeting may do so in the following manner: in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall, and also via remote means. And if you would like to participate virtually or remotely, the agenda is on the town of Plymouth's website. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. First out of our business is the public hearing, Aquaculture License Renewal. Thomas Hagan.
Mike Dolly, Assistant High Master. We have reviewed Mr. Hagan's renewal application, and he has met his expenditures for the last for his grants, and we are recommending that this renewal be approved, and he is in good standing, so we support this measure. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Mr. Renewal, right?
Yes, sir.
You have a motion from the board?
Approval. Second?
Move, the motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Chief, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Board, Board of Suckman, Mr. Quintle. I thank you for allowing me to take time of your busy schedule tonight to introduce you to your four newest police officers, three of your four newest promotions, and introduce you to three gentlemen, civilians whose actions on June 3rd ultimately saved one of our residents from severe bodily harm. I'd like to introduce the officers first. Captain Higgins. The four newest officers graduated from the academy on July 7th. They just finished two weeks of in-house training, going over our policies, procedures, and just some of our own internal administrative issues. They will be, actually Monday, they're now on the road in the company of a field training officer, where they'll be there for the next four to six months. They'll be evaluated weekly, and hopefully they pass our rigorous program, they'll be on their own by Thanksgiving. I'd first like to introduce you to Officer Noah Regalato. He was born in Portland, Oregon, and grew up in Plymouth. He's a proud son of Lawrence and Michelle Regalato. He graduated from Plymouth North High School in 2015. He attended the University of Southern Maine, earning a degree in environmental planning and policy. Prior to entry in the police academy, he worked for the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department as a corrections officer. His badge will be pinned on by his parents. Officer Joshua Aylward was born and raised in the town of Plymouth. He went to Plymouth South High School in completing the vocational competency program. If he's around long enough, hopefully he'll help us design and build my new station. After high school, he started his own business, running a cor- the corian counter shop business, countertop business for 10 years, before he decided to pursue a career in law enforcement. Officer Aylward's badge will be pinned on by his mother Tracy, his father Mark, and his brother Zach. Officer Jacob Usher was, he was born and raised in Plymouth. He went to Plymouth South High School, played football, and was in the technical studies program. He attended Bridgewater State University and hold a degree in business management. During college, he was a member of the Phi Theta Kappa National Honor Society. He will be pinned by his mother Jill. Officer Thomas Malloy is a proud husband of Whitney and even prouder father of his daughter Avery. He's from Whitman, but now that they no longer make the Toll House cookies, he wants to serve the residents of Plymouth. Officer Malloy served in Marine Corps for 11 years, reaching the rank of Staff Sergeant, having the duties as a squad leader, unit leader, and infantry combat instructor. Officer Malloy was elected by his peers in the police academy to be their class president, and we are very proud of him for his accomplishment. He will be, he will be pinned by his wife and daughter. The four newest promotions, longtime police officers for the town of Plymouth, they all took effect on July 1st. The first one is Sergeant Thomas Delora. Unfortunately, due to previous commitments, he's not allowed, he was unable to be here tonight. Thomas grew up in Plymouth, he's married with two children. He attended the Roger Williams University Field Training Officer Class, becoming one of our field training officers. In 2020, he became a member of our department's training unit. He trains officers in the TASER, firearms, less lethal, use of force, and de-escalation. Sergeant Delora has been assigned to the mountain bike unit as well as the street crimes unit. In 2018, he was awarded the Medal of Valor from the Massachusetts Police Association and the Platinum Award from the Massachusetts Coalition of Police. While serving as a secretary, secretary for the Patrolmen's Union, he organized a Plymouth Police Department's Children's Toy Drive. Sergeant Charles Delora, yes, Thomas and Charles are brothers. Charles Delora grew up in West Plymouth and attended Coyle Cassidy High School. He has been a member of the department since 2013. He has a bachelor's degree in business management from Bridgewater University and a master's degree in criminal justice from California Coast University. Sergeant Delora is currently a member of the motor unit and recently participated in the Top Cop Challenge at New England Motor Speedway. He has been a field training officer and has been a member of the street crimes unit. Charlie was a union student for the Patrolmen's Union prior to his promotion to sergeant. He is a proud husband to his wife Kimberly and proud father of his two sons Charlie Junior and Cade. He will be pinned by his wife and children this evening. Sergeant Daniel Heard grew up in Plymouth, graduating from Plymouth North High School in 2005. He graduated from the Plymouth Police Academy in 2014. Prior to his career in policing, he was involved in construction and restaurant management. He lives in Plymouth with his wife Courtney and his new daughter Leanna. Sergeant Heard has been a field training officer and has worked in the street crimes unit, and he is working towards his bachelor's degree at UMass Dartmouth. He will be pinned by his wife and daughter. Finally, Lieutenant David List. David grew up in the Berkshires. At the age of 17, he enlisted in the US Army Reserve as a combat engineer. In 2003, he realized that Berkshires did not have an ocean and wanted to move to Plymouth. He made his home here. He's a proud father of two children, and he joined the police department, Plymouth Police Department in 2007. He earned his bachelor's degree from Westfield State University, and he went, later went on to earn his master's degree in criminal justice from Curry College. Lieutenant List has been a patrol supervisor, as well as a member of the mountain bike and street crimes units. He's also been assigned as a field training officer. He is currently a member of the training unit as a firearms TASER and less lethal instructor. In 2018, he was awarded the Medal of Valor by the Massachusetts Police Association and the Platinum Award by the Massachusetts Coalition of Police. Lieutenant List will be pinned by his daughter Carolyn. Captain Higgins?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To and will uphold.
To and will uphold.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And that I will fairly.
Fairly.
And equitably.
Equitably.
Execute the laws.
Execute the laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
Within the extent of my authority.
Within the extent of my authority.
And jurisdiction.
And jurisdiction.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, George.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
And coming upon me.
And coming upon me.
Has a stake your rank.
Have a stake your rank.
Of the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
Of the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
And I will obey.
And I will obey.
And be bound by such rules.
And be bound by such rules.
And regulations has, now are.
And regulations now are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
From time to time.
From time to time.
Established for the government.
Established for the government.
Of the Town of Plymouth.
Of the Town of Plymouth.
Police Department.
Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One last time. Aye, state your name.
Aye, state your name.
Hereby accept the position of, state your rank.
Hereby accept the position of, sir.
In and for the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
In and for the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
Of the Town of Plymouth.
Of the Town of Plymouth.
Congratulations.
Carefully, rear step. Lieutenant, please spread out down the aisle a little bit. Anybody pinning these officers and supervisors, please come forward. Any family members or friends pinning? Go ahead and pin the badges on, folks. Thank you. Could I have just one last round of applause for these gentlemen? Congratulations, gentlemen. Dismissed. Could I please have Jamie Costa, Jeffrey Williams, and David Williams step forward? Ladies and gentlemen, these are three, three men that really helped a civilian of ours, a Plymouth citizen, in her time of need. This was a letter from Chief Flynn to Jamie Costa, who's in the middle, Jeffrey Williams, who is on your left, and David Williams, who is on your right, from Dana Flynn, Chief of Police. The date is July 11th of 2023 regarding a letter of appreciation. On June 3rd, 2023, a man entered his estranged wife's house in violation of restraining order while masked. He was carrying weapons and handcuffs. From across the street, the three, the three men in front of you heard a woman scream for help. Without hesitation, the three of you ran towards the screams and observed as the woman was pulled from the house and led by a man across the front yard. As you approached, the man brandished what appeared to be a firearm. Without any regard for your own safety, both Jamie Costa and David Williams engaged the man in a physical struggle and were able to bring him to the ground, which allowed the woman to break free. Jeffrey Williams then lawfully held the man at gunpoint until the arrival of us. Your actions on June 3rd undoubtedly saved the woman from serious bodily harm. On behalf of the Plymouth Police Department and the residents of the Town of Plymouth, it was important that you be publicly commended. Get a little emotional, I've known some of these guys for a long time, went to school with them. Your actions were nothing short of heroic. We thank you for your selfless and bold action, Chief Dana Flynn. One last round of applause. Mr. Quintle, that concludes our presentation for the evening. Again, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute recess and let people clear route and do what they're going to do. Welcome back, everyone. Next on the agenda is No Place for Hate Committee Outstanding Citizen Awards Presentation. Please make sure the green light is on and identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Platt. Tonight, for the sixth year, the town's No Place for Hate Committee is presenting its Outstanding Citizenship Award. This award is different from the many excellent scholarships offered through the high schools. The recipients do not have to be seniors, nor do they have to be college-bound. They do have to be active in their community and make a difference in ways that are consistent with the committee's mission, which is described on our website. The specific eligibility requirements for this award are: A recipient of the award will be a student who, in the opinion of the committee, has shown a commitment to social justice by challenging discrimination or bigotry through his or her actions, and/or who actively works to celebrate diversity or to protect the civil rights of all people in our community. Tonight, we honor three amazing young women. Our vice chair, Peter Matlin, will tell you about the first one.
Thank you very much, John. It is an honor to announce that the first recipient of the 2023 Outstanding Citizenship Award is Grace Elizabeth Hamilton, who has just finished her junior year at the Rising Tide Public Charter School. According to her college and future planning counselor, Isabella Trottsmendorf, Grace stands out among Rising Tide students in that she sincerely cares about the well-being of others and the school community as a whole. Grace is a founding member of the school's Diversity, Belonging, Inclusion, and Equity Work Group, and has always maintained a commitment to its values. She has actively recruited new members and puts forward ideas about how to do DIBI. On an everyday basis, she frequently asks teachers for suggestions for what would make the school a better place and keeps a notebook of these ideas. The mission of the DBIE work group is to help make everyone feel like they have a place in the school, that their voice will be heard, and to educate others about minorities who have been mistreated and misunderstood. So what does that mean in practice? Last year, for example, on her own initiative, Grace reached out to an uncle who leads diversity and inclusion initiatives at Bridgewater State University and brought him in as a school speaker. She and her uncle also brought a group of Muslim students from BSU to speak with students about Ramadan and how they overcame the racially charged hate that they're forced to deal with on a daily basis. Previously, Grace took a leadership role in a collaborative racial healing quilt project to raise awareness about diverse cultures within the school community, recruiting friends to join the project and bringing in her own art supplies to supplement the grant-funded materials. When asked about what motivates her in her activities, Grace credits her amazing teachers and everyone in the upper school office. She says that they have shown an unbelievably steady stream of compassion and understanding. They're always giving 100%. The Rising Tide community is what inspires me to be positive. Asked about her future, Grace says she would love to be a financial advisor or a history professor at a college. So the Plymouth No Place for Hate Committee is thrilled to present its Outstanding Citizenship Award to Grace Elizabeth Hamilton. And let me read the award. It states, "The Town of Plymouth No Place for Hate Committee is pleased to present Grace Elizabeth Hamilton with its Outstanding Citizenship Award in recognition of her actions towards making Plymouth a better community for all." Awarded this 25th day of July, 2023. Grace, congratulations.
Thank you. Well done. Well done.
Good evening. My name is Artis Loges, and I'm an associate member of the Plymouth No Place for Hate Committee. Our next recipient of the award is Maria Eduarda de Borra Piera, class of 2023 graduate of Plymouth North High School. She was nominated by Matt Caponito, the advisor of Friends Without Borders Club. He writes, "I have known Maria since January of 2021. I have been amazed by the immeasurable impact Maria has had on advancing equity, justice, and inclusion throughout the Plymouth public schools community. She is driven by a deep-rooted conviction in her work based on her experience as an English learner in Plymouth. Maria told us, from elementary school, kids were rude to me because I was one of only two ESL kids in my school. So she made it her goal to help ESL kids be more included, to create a safe space for them to share their experience at school with English-speaking students in a fun environment. In March, Maria helped to facilitate a recorded roundtable held for former English learners. Through her courage and honesty, Maria helped to draw out powerful perspectives by the other students about their school experiences. This conversation will be shared with Plymouth public school staff to promote a better understanding of English learners' successes and challenges. Maria's leadership skills have also been of great benefit to the PNHS Equity and Justice Committee. This spring, Maria helped to produce a video highlighting students' experiences of injustice and bigotry. As she puts it, "We created a video that showed the insensitive comments we heard around school." We showed this to the staff at PNHS. This was a big step for the club because it was a way to show the staff things that go on every day that they don't see or hear. This video had an impact townwide, and it helped staff develop responses to these situations. When asked what drives her activism, Maria says, "The thing that motivates me the most is the thought that the same thing could happen to somebody else." This fall, she will be attending UMass Lowell, majoring in psychology. She plans to go into the criminal psychology field. Just like to add, from my lived and personal experiences, I know the harm that is caused to students, and for that matter, everybody, because of exclusion. And I want to personally thank Maria for her leadership and courage to do something about it. The Plymouth No Place for Hate Committee is thrilled to present its Outstanding Citizenship Award to Maria Eduarda de Borra Piera. Congratulations.
My name is Susan Moore, a longtime member of No Place for Hate. Our third recipient of the 2023 Outstanding Citizen Award is Alana Rabbit, who has just completed her junior year at Plymouth South High School. She was nominated by Keith Graceman, who was both her teacher and the Gay Straight Alliance facilitator. The mission of the GSA is to unite queer and non-queer youth and to make the student body of Plymouth South safer and more accepting by spreading awareness and education. Here's what Keith says about Alana. "She's always been motivated, engaged, and keen to work for change. For the school play, she helped man a table to increase the visibility of the GSA. This year, she took over and showed true leadership, compassion, and dedication. She kept the group organized and focused while we created the No Place for Hate Post-it Project. This project was done to raise awareness in the school of the discrimination that takes place in the student body and to open up a dialogue. It consisted of a mural of encouraging and accepting messages which students wrote to speak out against discrimination. Alana is a member of the Plymouth South Theater Guild and acted in its 2022 production of The Laramie Project, a moving and timely drama about the death of Matthew Shepherd, a young man murdered for his identity as a gay man in the town of Laramie, Wyoming. Alana is part of the Center Stage Dance Studio as well as its outreach team, which performs regularly for several causes, including the Kindness Festival in Born last fall and at several nursing homes over the winter. I love this kind of volunteer work," she explains, "because dance is such a beautiful form of expression and it can bring such joy." Alana hopes to pursue a career in environmental science and is working with Sustainable Plymouth to build a pollinator garden in the Manamit Recreation Area. When asked about what motivates her activism, Alana responded, "Right now is such a tense time in our country that every little thing counts. If I'm a part of a thing that makes someone's life more enjoyable, that makes living with myself easier because I know that I was part of a positive change." The Plymouth No Place for Hate Committee is thrilled to present an outstanding citizen award to Alana Rabbit. Before I forget, I think we're going to be safe, the next generation, I feel blessed.
Could we do one picture with the, with the select board and the recipients, please?
Moving right along to licenses, permits, and petitions. Any questions on any of the administrative notes or licenses? Is your mic on, Charlie? Mr. Blitzer, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions on the library event. And I think somebody, Kelsey's supposed to be here, I think, on Zoom.
Mr. Chairman, Kate Gomes, who's the assistant library director, is on with us.
Okay.
Just one moment.
Thank you. Library license. It's not listed as, right here, the third one down.
Sorry, I just joined the panel. Is there more to the library?
Yes, Charlie Blitzer, selectman, I have a question. What's your first name?
I'm Catherine Gomes. I'm the assistant library director.
Catherine, I've got a question for you. On the event on 8/25 from Fortuna, a singles night event at the Plymouth Public Library with a wine and beer being served. I have a question. Is this a private event or is this a library event?
This is a library event. It's an event that's being hosted at the library for community members.
Okay. Have you done alcohol before in the library? Is this a new thing?
Yes, we have. Actually, as recently as April, there was an event at the library, another after-hours event where alcohol was served.
But again, the library was run by the library, not a private vendor?
So that was run by the Plymouth Public Library Foundation.
Okay.
But we, last year in August, we ran another similar end-of-summer event that we called Fireside Friday, and that was an event that was run by the library that was free for the public to attend.
Is this a fundraising event or is this, what is, what's the reasoning for this event? Is it fundraising or?
No, it's not a fundraising event. It is a fundraising event. So it's an event for the community. It was a request from a citizen who asked that the library take a more active role in promoting, you know, social engagement for patrons of this age range and in this demographic that we're hoping to attract. And one of our keystone parts of our strategic plan was community. So we have a great partner in Plymouth Pride, and we thought that we would host this event and see how it went.
And is this after business hours? Is that this event?
It is. It's a library, we call it an after-dark event.
So how do you work with staff? Is this overtime for staff? Or maybe I should ask, I have a DPW director, maybe I could ask her. I was just wondering, how does this work for the custodians or the library personnel?
Oh, so there typically wouldn't be a custodian on at that time. We could, of course, bring them on if you would feel more comfortable with that. Myself and Kelsey Casey, the library director, would be present, and there would be two members of the regular library staff present. So it would be the four of us.
I mean, I guess somebody has to clean the place, so I just was concerned.
There's a custodian that comes in on Saturday morning. But we could offer our current custodian overtime in order to stay. We are currently down a custodian position.
I guess what I'm trying to, have you talked to the DPW about this event and worked it out with them to make sure that they're okay with this event?
I could certainly reach out to the DPW. We haven't reached out to the DPW because in the past, the library custodians are under library control, and we don't really work with the DPW when it comes to custodial work.
Okay.
So the custodians are part of our budget.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. You've answered them. And good luck with the event.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members? I'm just going to echo in with budgets and employee costs. You mentioned four. And are the funds for this event going to pay for whether they're Saturday or whatever day they are? And is this going to be a precedence? We're going to have these after-hours events at the library? I just, I'm a little mixed on this one. I'm being honest with you. I just don't want it to be, I just don't feel it should be like too often we should be having after-hours at the library for whatever reason. I just don't think the libraries are to learn in place. Books, computers, and alcohol brings its whole host of problems. So, you know, I'm not saying you're going to have problems, but I would feel much better if there was least amount possible of these as possible, for my vote, anyway. I'll let this one go. You've already applied, but I, you know, so you want to have a fundraiser, you know, maybe get a tent put it somewhere, but I just, it just doesn't sit right with me having a, you know, after-hours at the library. That's not the way I looked at it. Maybe I'm old-fashioned, you know? Who knows? I don't, you know, wait and see, I guess. But in the form of budgets and overtime and all that stuff, I just think we could use our, you know, labor force money differently.
Sure. So Kelsey and I are on salary, so we don't cost you any additional funds. We only do a library-sponsored after-hours event once a year traditionally.
Okay.
And then it's usually only one or two staff members who are earning like an hour or two of overtime. So it's not a huge staff cost.
Well, you made me feel better already where it's once a year, so I'm all right with that. Any other questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion? Are we going to take them all? First off, well, we'll find out what the motion is, right?
I'll make a motion that we approve the licenses, permits, and petitions section as a group.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Moving on to the administrative notes. There's 15 of them. Any questions on any of the administrative notes? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion that we move them, vote on them as a group.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Canty?
I just would like to point the public to, and anyone that may have any business that they want to be heard by Fall Town Meeting, to administrative note 15, that the Fall Town Meeting warrant is going to open today, Tuesday, the 25th, and close on Friday, August 11th, 2023, at 12 noon. So any articles that need to be submitted for the Fall Town Meeting, including citizen petition articles, need to be completed and turned in with all required backup by Friday, August 11th, 2023, no later than noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mahoney?
I'm good.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
That's okay. Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now, we got board and committee appointments. So on in Board of Appeals, one alternate seat, one three-year term until June 30, '26. And we have two applicants. Mr. Helm?
Before we begin, I would just like the board to know that I will be recusing myself on both Mr. Wallace and Mr. Helm and any discussions of their appointments.
Okay. I'm just getting the ones I want from the bottom. So we take the two applicants. I see Mr. Wallace is here, or was here.
Mr. Helm is here.
And Mr. Helm?
He's in the back.
How are you doing? Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Mr. Wallace?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quentle and members of the board. For the record, my name is Thomas Wallace. I reside at 30 Highland Terrace in Manomet, Plymouth, Massachusetts. You have my resume in front of you, which was submitted previously. A couple of additions to that, as well as having served both the past chairman of the board for the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce, chairman of the board for the Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation, and also I have had the privilege of serving at the request of the board's selectmen to fill in a position in the past on the Board of Health, and I have also had the privilege to serve as a town meeting member. I'm ready, willing to answer any questions you might ask. I am a real estate developer. I've been very involved in the development and the creation of such projects as the Pine Hills LLC, the Shops at Five, currently called The Grove, and of course, the project up in Commerce Way, which hosts three banks, Santander, Haber One, soon to be arriving Chase Bank, as well as a Wendy's and a Dunkin' Donuts. I am very involved in economic development, have continued to be involved in economic development and trying to bring forward projects that not only serve the community, but obviously enhance the community through additional revenue and tax sources. I'll answer any question you might ask.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And I know you appeared before us once previously when we had not quite advertised it as we intended, but I appreciate you coming back before us a second time. So we have the application materials in our packet, and I'd like to echo what Mr. Helm said last time we're doing appointments, that having these, this application that gives the applicant an opportunity to list their qualifications is a real benefit globally to all of these, and your qualifications certainly, and this speak for themselves. In terms of, as you are a developer in town, obviously you may have items before the ZBA from time to time, and I assume you would have no problem recusing yourself. I know you're going for an alternate position, but if you were serving for that meeting or in a future, if you ever were elevated to the permanent position as a result of serving as an alternate, you would have no problem recusing yourself from such a vote or determination such as Mr. Helm has done this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, the law requires that were either have any conflict of interest in any form or manner, that I must recuse myself. Otherwise, any vote that I might take could be easily nullified by appeal.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Wallace, a couple of questions. Currently, do you have any projects going right now in Plymouth?
No. The most recent project I had was the creation of five lots, each five acres apiece, single-family lots on Bump Rock Road. The issue there at the time was that Bump Rock Road, because it was so narrow, the fire department had great difficulty in assuring that they could respond to any emergency, be it a house fire or a forest fire on Bump Rock Road. Part of the agreement was that we improved that road, we widened it. It's met all requirements of the fire department, as well as we're now requiring any homes that we control and building that they follow the Plymouth Fire Wise policy, which is designed to try to prevent the kind of forest fires and other fires that have happened in the West Coast as a result of not maintaining the forest floor.
So would you say that you've gone through the process?
I've gone through the process for more than 25 years.
Do you feel that because of who you are that you've been treated differently during that process?
No, I have not ever been, I don't think I've ever been treated differently. I think obviously there is a permitting process. In many instances, I've had to go to town meeting. Town meeting has approved the projects and development. The process of developing in any community is intended to be difficult. It should be difficult, and all questions should be answered, but it should also be handled fairly, and I have always been handled fairly.
And ultimately, I believe, and I wasn't on this board when this was going on, but your project was appealed. Was it appealed or taken to court?
The only project that has been appealed in the courts was Bump Rock Road.
That's what I'm talking about?
Yes, that was appealed. It was actually appealed twice. The first time it was appealed is when we did what is called an A and R plan, approval not required. Since each lot was five acres, since each lot had over 200 foot of frontage, the law allows you to have a lot. You do go through the planning board. It is wise to get there. Okay, the planning board also okayed it. That was appealed in the court of law, took two years, and the courts found that I had done everything correctly according to the law, and they found it in our favor. We then had to change a covenant. It was not an open space covenant. It was a development covenant. The core issue was that in the past, a previous developer had decided not to improve the road and had made an agreement with the planning board that said, "If you don't make me improve the road, I'll limit the number of houses." Since the road was never improved and was a public safety hazard, I went to the fire chief, I went to the planning board. The planning board approved the lot, the subdivision, which was five lots only, one which already existed, and each lot at five acres apiece. That was approved by the planning board. That was also appealed. We went to the courts. It'd been two years. In the end, the abutter who appealed it decided to withdraw their appeal, and that was clear and worked out. Coincidentally, and it's just very recent, the abutter, in talking to my son, said, "You know what, Tom?" My son's alternate, "Tom, you know what? The road looks pretty good."
But the point I'm making is you follow the process, you follow the law.
Absolutely.
Through this process. This appointment is very, it's a very important appointment. We've gotten a lot of emails, okay, that are controversial, and I just want to be clear on a couple, well, one thing. I've known you a long time, 24 years probably at least.
Yes.
When East Bay Grill first opened and when you were doing Pine Hills. And you've been a supporter of mine. I think you, I believe you gave me $100. I want to disclose this right up front for my campaign, because you're a supporter, just like a lot of citizens in Plymouth. I raised a lot of money for my two campaigns. You were one contributor, but there was quite a few other people. So I just want to make it clear out there because some of the emails are talking about all the money you gave to political supporters, and I think they're trying to make us, scare us into not voting for you. It's like going to be a conflict of interest for us. I don't consider it a conflict for me if I vote for you. The other thing that every, every email, they talk about you're a developer. And I was going to talk about this afterwards, and I probably will, but being a developer, to me, is a plus for being on this board because you have the knowledge and the expertise. And that's, so I consider that an asset for all the folks out there, for the emails. In fact, I'll read you one email that's, and this is a woman who's been in politics. I'm surprised she's not here tonight. I won't say her name. I don't want to embarrass her. But I am writing, actually, here it is right here. "I believe it would be an enormous conflict of interest to appoint Tom Wallace, Wallace to the ZBA, no matter how well-qualified he is." To me, that, it just, that doesn't make sense. You're going to recuse yourself. You can't vote on anything that your friends are involved in or you're involved in. And there's two areas of Plymouth that we're getting, all the emails came from. But I represent this whole town, and I'm going to vote tonight. I'm going to listen to Mr. Helm because I don't know who he is. And I'm going to listen to his qualifications. I've got your resume in front of me, and I know you personally. I know what you've done. I'm going to listen to him afterwards. And if his only qualifications are, "I'm not a developer," I'm not, that doesn't, because that's what all the emails said. He's not a developer. So I want to hear his qualifications before he decides. So anyway, thank you for your time, and that's all my questions.
May I make one observation? May I make one observation?
Sure.
Obviously, I'm very well aware of development, development rules, the regulations, the bylaws. I'm very familiar, and have worked within the town of Plymouth with all of the departments over a long period of time. What I find interesting is on a board such as the Zoning Board of Appeals, where every time any board, this board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the planning board, the school committee makes a decision, by the very nature of a decision, right, somebody's gonna be disappointed, and somebody's gonna be happy. If we were not to allow qualified people to serve on boards, I offer this observation, you can accept it or not, wouldn't it be a shame if on the Board of Health, we wouldn't allow an LPN, a registered nurse, or a physician, because that was their practice? Wouldn't it be a shame if on the school committee, we didn't allow an educator to run for office? Wouldn't it be a shame if on the planning board, we didn't allow an architect to run for office? I don't think my background, my history, the work I've done in Plymouth, which I'm very proud of all of it, should be a disqualifying factor. In fact, what I think is it should be a qualifying factor. So I thank you for your comments, Mr. Blitzer.
Mr. Mahoney? Tom, welcome. Obviously, you rattled off your significant development accomplishments over the years, Pine Hills, The Grove, and you referenced out there Commerce Way, the Wendy's, the Dunkin' Donuts, and the banks. And I'm in that Dunkin' Donuts every day, and I can tell you, I've seen some things go on in that Dunkin' Donuts that I don't see at other locations. So those are, that's a, I mean, they're comedic. They're nice people there, don't get me wrong, but I enjoy my interactions with that crew over there. So having said that, back to the covenant at Bump Rock Road. So you went in front of the planning board. You asked for permission to have that covenant lifted, okay?
Amended.
Amended. And they did that. So the director of planning of the community, who's been in this job for decades, vehemently opposed the amendment to that covenant. And he typically doesn't take those positions. That was unique for him to do that in his time, you know, serving in that role. And he was vehemently opposed to that happening, because it effectively had never happened before. And it was, obviously, and I've discussed this with him, you know, an extremely dangerous precedent to set. You had a member of the planning board at the time, I think it was a three or four to one vote?
It was a three to two vote.
Three to two?
I believe it was, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so I believe that the, Mr. McGregor was the chair at the time?
He was.
Okay, so I think he put in 35 years on the planning board, and I remember him saying something to the effect of, "That was the worst vote he had ever participated in, in almost two generations in the job." So I guess my question is, I mean, weren't you provided with preferential treatment in that vote?
Absolutely not, far from it. In fact, first of all, there was a huge misconception as to what the covenant did. It was argued by Mr. McGregor, and quite frankly, by Mr. Hartman, that this was a conservation restriction, and that voting to amend the covenant would have dramatic impact on all other conservation restrictions in the town of Plymouth. The legal issue was very clear, it was not a conservation restriction. So the very basis of the argument was false from the outcome, from the beginning. It was, in fact, a covenant granted, owned by the Plymouth Planning Board, the town of Plymouth, which was given to the previous owner, so that they did not improve the road. And in their mind, they were willing to not pay a great expense to improve the road to public safety standards, and then they, that covenant was granted to the town of Plymouth. The first legal argument was, who controls the covenant? Was it the landowners, the people who live there, or was it the Plymouth Planning Board? The law states very clearly that the covenant was controlled by the Plymouth Planning Board.
Correct.
There was great environmental pressure, argumentative pressure, neighborhood pressure to not grant that. The, we still have that public meeting on tape. It was described by others as out of control. But that's the process. I was treated fairly. People stated their opinions, they stated what they thought was the law, they argued it. Other members on the planning board, some of who are still there today, knew the law and knew, in fact, what was being required. I agreed to greatly improve the road over 1,000 feet. I agreed to widen it as requested by the neighbors, to not more than 26 feet. I agreed to harden that road to hold fire equipment that would weigh up to 80,000 pounds. I agreed that our development would follow the Firewise policy of the Plymouth Fire Department. I agreed to put in hammerheads along that road, which allows firefighters to turn their trucks around as opposed to backing them down 150 to 200 feet. I agreed to have every house sprinkled, sprinklers, internal sprinklers. I had met with both the then-fire chief, Bradley, and current fire chief, Foley, and they negotiated with me on what they needed to meet public safety requirements, and I agreed with everything they asked for. I don't know what else I might have done.
Good, thank you.
One more thing. So ultimately, you follow the law, you, did this go to court?
Yes, it did.
Did the court rule that you're?
The court never ruled. The abbot, the appellant, decided to drop the case, no longer wanted to pursue it, and we shook hands and made amends.
Is it probably because he knew he wouldn't prevail? Is that what, why?
I can never judge another person's motives.
And just to get it straight, you have five single-family homes on five-acre lots?
Correct, 25 acres, each home, five acres each.
And the road has been approved to the satisfaction of the fire chief?
The road has, the fire department has already sent down one inspector who has walked the road. We still are completing some more work to be done. We have not sold another lot yet, and we won't until such a time as that road is completed. But interim steps, the fire department has sent inspectors down, they have walked it, they've approved everything we've done, and continue to be helpful.
And I brought this up, and I didn't have to bring this up. It probably is opening up some, I have a couple gentlemen friend who are friends that I know are against this, and, but I brought it up for the reason that your appointment is controversial because of that one project. You know, what you've done for Plymouth, and I was gonna save this till afterwards, but I'll say it now. The, you know, the Pine Hills, when I met you, you were developing that, and I knew about you as a kid, I grew up down there, it was all woods down there. Digital bought the land, not to get into the whole history of it. And you bought that land for 10 million 3,000 acres, and you started the Pine Hills, which turned out to be an award-winning development, okay? And that came on the heels of a disastrous development a few miles down the road, called the Ponds of Plymouth. Disastrous, 3,000 homes, no services. It put so much pressure on the schools with all the kids that, it was all families. The roads were terrible, no sidewalks, no ballfields, no fire stations. The developer got away with murder. So when your development came, and I remember it clearly, everything you had to go through, and the boards did a good job. You have your own water, your own roads, they maintain sewerage, everything. The fire station there, I know you pay for the suppressant, all the fire hydrants and all that, but you created your own self-sufficient, you know, you get your water sewer treatment plant and your own water. And it didn't, I think there's 35 kids there now, but there wasn't any for years, because it was a 55-plus predominantly. And it was a great win, I think, I looked at the numbers, and since the inception, I think you have 272 million in tax revenue, I believe, with about 4, 4-plus million in CPA money to the town. It's been a huge, award-winning, and I commend you for being on the ground floor of that. And it was a great development. Also, you, the landing over there on Commerce Way has been a success. There's a third bank going in there. It'll be three banks, two national chains, very successful. You also had a lot to do with the Shops at Five, getting that. It probably hasn't been as successful as you, as you wanted it to be, but it was a gravel pit before, and look what's there now. So you know what you're doing, I feel comfortable with your qualifications. And I'm gonna listen to Mr. Holm, but I just want to get it on the record that this one controversial Chiltonville project shouldn't be enough to not appoint you, because you are more than qualified for this board.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallace? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Holm?
Well, I come from a different perspective. Good evening, gentlemen, Don Holm and audience. My wife and I live in Ellisville, near Savory Pond. Our daughters and husbands and grandkids live nearby in Marshfield and Weston, and we feel Plymouth is a very special town. Plymouth is also a complex town with a mix of unique history, incredibly welcoming, natural coastal greenbelt, and like many coastal communities, growing and developing. Town planning and land use from the Corridge to Cedarville challenges, face challenges for commercial and residential development. I hope to help provide a reliable and objective perspective to all navigating through the zoning department appeals processes, the process, while balancing growth with builders' concerns and conservation-minded residents and businesses, ensuring value and avoiding litigation. I will provide a diligent worth ethic and objectivity to all before the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with the rules and regulations as deemed appropriate on a case-by-case basis. My credentials. I am a real estate licensee since 2005, holding licenses in Massachusetts and California. I was a board member from 2006 to 2010 of the BPOA, which is more than 710 members that are property owners and professionals. My firm represents, represented commercial, income properties, tenants, land and office properties in the San Francisco Bay area. I own currently two properties here in Plymouth since 2016. I'm licensed with Allison James Estate and Homes and Golden Gate Sotheby's International. I belong to NAR, MAR, South Shore Realtors, Cape and Islands MLS. So I have some experience with the town. During 2223, I became a precinct 14 town meeting member. I developed an agenda on behalf of concerned neighborhoods and some of the businesses located throughout Cedarville. It was primarily working on traffic issues between Cedarville and Ellisville along 3A, Hedges Pond and Herring Pond Roads. I prepared a short treatment on street safety and traffic-related issues that were designed to help to establish communication between the town, Mast Dot, and the community. Our own Public Works Department, the Cedarville Steering Committee, and our state rep were partners in addressing traffic safety and road conditions for a much-needed traffic plan for the 3A corridor and the rotary. The results prompted more public awareness and funding from the town, and a vision for the future. I'm retired, well, not exactly. I'm, I've always been interested in participating in local planning and its impacts, starting from my early years as a grape grower. In those days, NAP and Sonoma Valleys had similar issues impacting the traditional farm towns, water, waste, growth, and their unique tourism. I spent 40-plus years working with my family as wine grape farmers, and some of that as a winemaker and owner of a bonded winery, Toyon Winery and Vineyards. I was a solid waste industry executive for 20 years, holding a position with SWANA, the Solid Waste Association of America, as a board member, and a member of the APWA, the American Public Works Association. I worked in behalf of Waste Management of America, Altfater, Sulo, and SSI of Germany. We built private and public partnerships with decision-makers throughout the US, Canada, and Mexico to establish diversion of solid waste and lengthen landfill life. I worked with US and Canadian CUPE, that's the Canadian Union of Public Employees, labor union truck drivers implementing safer operating exposure. We designed, engineered, and implemented collection systems for both large urban, suburban, and rural communities. I hold two patents for product design. If appointed, I hope to build working knowledge of the Zoning Board of Appeals to provide fellow members positive support, and to provide the town and those before the board with a commitment to fairness and objectivity. Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Holm. What is your understanding of what the Zoning Board of Appeals' role is in town government?
To provide an objective-by-the-book interpretation of the, on a case-by-case basis.
So are you making policy, or are you interpreting the law and the rules as they exist?
This is not a policymaking position.
Okay. And when you were approaching the microphone, you made a comment. What was that comment?
Oh, I don't, I don't really remember.
Was it, "I would vote for that guy if I were a developer"?
That's it. Well, something like that.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Do you think that was an appropriate remark to heckle your competition in an election?
I wouldn't call it a heckle.
What would you call that?
I think it was a comment about the kind of obvious, very complicated relationship he has with the town.
Do you think that was an appropriate comment to make?
And I don't have that complication. And I think it's a position that probably doesn't warrant that kind of competition, that kind of complication. That's just my opinion.
So would that be a yes, you thought that was an appropriate comment to make?
I don't, I don't think it's a yes or no answer.
It's a yes or no question?
No, I know, but I'm not answering it in that fashion. I mean, it seems kind of adversarial, I don't feel comfortable with that.
You understand that you're applying for a quasi-judicial role, correct?
Quasi.
So you're gonna have to give a lot of yes or no answers?
Based on the cases, right, on facts.
And you don't want to give one right now?
That's not a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
So, Mr. Holm, I'd never met you, and you're an impressive guy. You know, there's three boards right away that I'd love to see you on, solid waste, agriculture, and land acquisition. I think you're qualified for all three of those boards. But, but you don't have complications, but you don't, also don't have experience in the town.
At the town?
At, in the town, you don't have experience in this town, and you don't?
Well, I was a town meeting member last year. I'm chairman of the Steering Committee in Cedarville.
That's, I know, and I'm gonna get to that in a minute.
Okay.
I just want to know what qualifies you, because the other three, I could argue all day, those others for you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're a farmer, you were in solid waste, and you've done land acquisitions. What have you, what, zoning, have you ever been on any kind of, what's your experience with zoning rules and regulations?
Well, in small project developments, I've had to go before city councils and planning departments and zoning boards to make sure that the permits were, that were required were followed. Sometimes we needed a support.
But you'll be, this should be a judicial position, as far as the rules and?
Quasi, quasi.
Quasi, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have the same kind of development sort of background. And if you're looking for a developer for the position, which I understand is a, is a good qualification, but that's not what I bring to the table. So I'm bringing something that is a little bit outside the box, but not entirely, because I've been in real estate a long time, in management with public and private ventures professionally for a long time. This isn't like my first rodeo.
I get you bring a different perspective, but you heard the last candidate and his experience, and the fact that he's a developer.
Well, I think you advocated very well for him. I do appreciate your, if I, if $100 could get me that kind of play, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, because, trust me, you can't buy me. And there's people, there's people in this room that gave me a lot more than $100.
No, 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 it was a joke mostly, but you advocated very strongly for him.
But I get all these, these are all emails. And everything is, he's a developer, he's, you know, he's, he's, and it, to me, that doesn't?
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure, go ahead.
I think what, what we have here is, we have some people who prefer to have someone who is not a developer. That doesn't mean that Mr. Wallace is? That doesn't mean that Mr. Wallace is not qualified or capable or any of that, but they would prefer not to see that, and that's why you got the emails.
But this is about the most who's the most qualified candidate, and people, all they say is they they're endorsing you. They don't tell me why, except that you're not Tom Wallace. So my next question is, besides the Cedarville, because this is your chance to let us know, Cedarville Steering Committee, are you involved in any other committees, organizations, anything besides town meeting, a former town meeting member?
Uh
Is there any other organizations you've worked with?
With the town?
Yes.
Other than being on the capital improvements committee?
What 158 Center Hill Road, have you done some work over there, affiliated with those folks over there?
Is that wasn't that on the agenda tonight?
What's that?
Anyway.
Not
I have the support of some really great people in the neighborhood around around town, not a lot. I don't have the long history here.
If you
I'm trying to establish a a positive volunteer role with the community, and
You're not listening to my question.
That's 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 my offer.
Here's my question.
I'm trying.
If you've been involved with the group at 158 Center Hill
No.
You're not.
No.
You've never done any kind of work over there.
I I think what are you reaching at?
I'm asked your question.
I just told you. But what what is what's that basis for?
It's you answer the question. The answer is no.
Okay, do I have a right
Is it a yes or no?
Get into it a little more with you?
No, just tell me the truth.
I told you, no.
Because he, okay.
That is the truth. So why what's the basis for your question?
There's no there's no there's there's no
Well, I mean, you have a question. There's a foundation for it. What is it?
I want to make sure you don't have a conflict of interest, because it's been 158 Center Hill Road has been the address
Okay.
On multiple appeals, okay, of of projects in town.
Okay.
And it's cost the town a lot of money. So that that's my basis.
You know
You're telling me you're telling me no.
What I said in my closing is I'm looking to assist the the board. I'm there to support them and to provide the town and the applicants for a fair, objective sort of presentation of the board's position. And and it's the advocacy of that, whatever that group is, are you reaching for something that I'm not involved in?
Okay.
Okay?
So the answer
This is an impartial role
So the answer was
That I'm bringing to the table.
You would not have a conflict. That was the answer. You would not have a conflict.
Those are your words. I said no.
You just said it, yeah, because you haven't been involved with them, so you wouldn't have a conflict. So I don't know why you're getting so upset. These are questions that
I'm not upset.
I don't know anything about you, Mr.
It's kind of interesting that you're really pushing that, that particular property. I mean, we just spent 30 minutes on another property. It's still in development.
So anyway, you have answered my questions, and I don't think you're qualified for the ZBA. That's my answer.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you. So we have an alternate seat for a three-year term until June 30, 2026.
Discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Canty?
So I'd like to thank both Mr. Wallace and Mr. Holm for availing themselves of questioning this evening. I candidly am concerned by the demeanor of the second applicant in coming up here. In my opinion, that was a heckle of the other person involved in this election, and then making a remark against a member of the select board, asking questions of him while he's up at the podium. I will grant the second applicant that Mr. Blitzer's definition of a question is more expansive than mine, but nevertheless, I think it's just totally inappropriate conduct to demonstrate my I have seen enough hearings through my day job to understand that if somebody behaves a certain way in front of somebody that they want something in front of, like a judge or like a panel that's elect that's voting for them, then they're only going to behave worse in a more liberal environment where they're not being reviewed like that. And that's concerning to me. When we had previous applications, the zoning board of appeals, I asked several questions related to decorum, because that is something we have heard historically, some comments about. That's a concern for me. I got some rather colorful, although ultimately reassuring, response from the other applicant at that time about that they would do better in regards to decorum, but I don't think we should be moving backwards by appointing somebody that conducts themselves in that way at this hearing. I just it was totally unacceptable, in my opinion, and I'm baffled that someone will behave that way while they're going up for a position. So that's just my position and opinion.
Mr. Quintil?
Mr. Blitzer?
I'd just like to add to that two things, the two R's you have to have if you're going to sit on the boards. It's reasonable and be respectful. And when you're on the ZBA, you're going to have lawyers arguing in front of you and, you know, going to ask you, you know, maybe some questions, and you have to be able to hand yourself handle yourself with decorum. Kevin's right about that. With that being said, Mr. Holm, I know nothing about you, but right now, like I told you, there's three boards that you would be you're more than qualified to be on. I just don't think the ZBA is a good fit right now. And and the reason why I I get a little upset is everybody that's advocating for you, they're doing it because they have an issue with Mr. Wallace. It's a personal thing. And, you know, the emails say, we're all going to be watching. I'm a I'm a voter, and I'm we're all going to be watching. Well, watch me. I'm voting for the best candidate tonight, the man who I think is the most qualified to serve this position. And if you don't want to vote me or support me, that's fine. I'm not even sure if I'm ever running again. But I'll tell you this, I'm going to remember be remembered for what I did and not what I didn't do. So with that being said, I'm going to I'll make a motion right now for Tom Wallace.
That's we're not making motions.
We're not how you're working.
We're going to vote.
Okay, well, I'll
Yeah. Anybody else have comments? No, I'd just like to say, when I first came on the board in, I think it was about 2000, 2001, the first year and a half, I sat at the zoning board of appeal hearings. And and people probably said, what's that kid doing while I was younger? But I wanted to see how it worked, and I went to all the planning board meetings, and I did this for over a year. And it's, in my view, the zoning board of appeals, from the time I spent there, is to grant relief, whether it be a citizen or a business, where they don't actually meet the zoning, they grant relief, or they don't grant relief. It's a very powerful board. They go for your presentation goes for the planning board, they put a list of recommendations, they can go for the ZBA, and the ZBA has the power to remove those restrictions. I'll even use the word ignore and implement different ones. So it's a very, very powerful board, and you got to be able to be very balanced. And for the most part, it is the building inspector back in those days, Dick Manfredi, used to sit in the back, and I've had many meetings with him, Gene Lowenberg, Karen Rich Creek. It's a good board, so. I totally understand what I'm voting for, and I'm going to vote what I think is best for the town at this time. That being said, we'll start the voting unless anyone else has comments. Seeing none, we're going to have one extension, Mr. Holm. Mr. Wallace?
Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Mahoney?
He's calling on you. How do you want to vote?
No.
Mr. Canty?
Yes for Mr. Wallace.
Yep.
Yes.
Three yes for Mr. Wallace, one abstention, which is Mr. Holm, and one no, Mr. Mahoney. I'm just saying it out loud so he can
I'll give my vote to Mr. Holm.
You will?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you reiterate the vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Three votes in favor of Mr. Wallace, Mr. Canty, Mr. Quintil, and Mr. Blitzer. One abstention by Mr. Holm, and Mr. Mahoney is going to use his vote for Mr. Holm. Thank you very much. Going to move on to the building committee?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments regarding the building committee and a modification to the agenda.
Yep.
Mr. Finnegan, who is who is going to be resigning, he will be resigning on September 1, 2024, so it is actually the term is effective September 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024 for this term for the building committee. Tracy Markey is listed for both the building committee and the land use acquisition committee, and, you know, she can obviously speak for herself, but she said that she wants to be considered for either or. Okay.
So we have three, two applicants for this position, right?
Correct. Tracy Markey and Janice
Okay, yeah, that's what I have. Okay. So is Tracy here? Would you like to come up and say a few things?
Sure. Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Tracy Markey. I grew up on the South Shore and moved to Plymouth to North Spooner, not North, to Spooner Street, two and a half years ago in 2021. And I am an architect by trade. I worked for a number of large firms for about 15 years, and I've been working for myself for the past seven years. My work is primarily for commercial, institutional, and civic buildings and have focuses in historic preservation and sustainable design. So I, being a new community member here in Plymouth, I would love to get more involved with the town, trying to build more of a community, meet more people, and thought the building committee would be a great place to start. Seems like it would be a great fit. I do understand that there would be a conflict of interest with me pursuing any work in the town of Plymouth during my tenure and probably, I think, for a year after.
Any questions, Mr. Canty?
So if I heard Mr. Sinessi correctly, you you're interested in either the building committee or the land use acquisition, but not both?
Preferably, yes.
Okay. And you mentioned the conflict of interest.
Mm-hmm.
Is so you understand that, and I assume that's not a problem for you?
No.
Okay. Do you given that you're interested in an either or, do you have a preference between the two, between the building and the land use acquisition committee?
I think I would prefer the building committee. It's a better fit for my skills and knowledge base.
I would agree with that assessment.
Mm-hmm.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Blitzer?
Tracy, I I looked at your resume, and I think you're a perfect fit for the building. You're an architect, and it again goes for qualifications. Who's got the most qualifications? And I think you're very qualified for it. I think you'd be an asset on on that board.
Thank you.
So and I'm going again, once again, qualifications, the most qualified. You seem to have great qualifications. I know somebody dropped out, and I haven't heard from the third candidate, but your resume, to me, was perfect for this position. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, Tracy? Thank you very much. Is Janice Abel here? Would you like to come up?
My name's Janice Abel, and I recently moved to Plymouth. So I saw that the town was looking for what I thought was a citizen, not an architect, to serve on the building committee. But I recently completed building a home in Plymouth, and I've been through that building process twice in my life. And I always loved Plymouth, which is one of the reasons I moved here. I've always visited Plymouth my whole entire life. I've lived in Massachusetts my whole life. I've always loved the architecture, the people, the town. And my background is that I actually have a bachelor's degree in chemistry. I have a master's degree in chemical engineering, and I have an MBA. So while I'm not an architect, I spent my my career mostly working in manufacturing and the process control industry. And I'm today, I'm working as an analyst, and I went to part-time recently. So I thought, well, this looked really interesting, and I have some time to devote to it. And I understand a lot about the building codes and things like that, because I've always had an interest in reading the law. So one of the reasons was I thought, well, I have time to give back to the town, and that was a way that I thought I could give back very constructively. And I grew up in Canton, Mass, and my dad was an architect, and he was a civil engineer. And he served on the planning board in Canton for 25 years, and I always thought that that was an admirable thing to do. And I thought he did a lot for the town, because he was also on the permanent school building committee for as long as till he till he died. And so he was very pro-proponent of buildings and also of the architecture of the buildings. And I thought he did a great job with the town in Canton. And my grandfather was also a builder, so I've spent my life looking at maps and architect drawings, and I've always had the knack of being able to visualize it very well. And as I mentioned, I've built two homes. I've traveled all over the world for work, so I've seen a lot of architecture. I've been in a lot of manufacturing plants all over the world. And for me, the most important things, and number one is safety. Number two is environmental impact, and number three is the functionality and, of course, the cost. And I always try to find a positive win-wins in everything that I do, because I always find that it's small sometimes it's easy to make a small change in the planning process and the design process than it is later on. And the reason that I was saying this is like recently, when we were building the house, when I saw the plan, I realized that when you open the door to the entrance, there's stairs right there, and, you know, people are getting older today. And one of the things, one of the biggest issues that people have when they get older is they fall. And so I noticed, and this is a safety issue, that just a small change makes a big difference. So I noticed, I realized that if you just changed the way the door opened, which didn't cost anything, no impact on cost, that it would be a lot safer, because you're not going to fall down the stairs easily. So I mean, that's just an example. I have many other examples. I have a friend that built a house that was one of a few of 100 houses in Massachusetts that is completely off the grid. There's only about 100, actually, in the whole United States, only about 100. And so he built it on the side of a cliff in Princeton. So I went through, he sat beside the next office, so I was always making comments and telling him this and that, you know, what he should do for planning. And like he put it, he had to put a bridge in, because it's on the side of a cliff to the house. And one of the things I said is, you know, because I knew he had small grandchildren, is another safety issue is you got to make sure that you have some kind of railing on the side that the kids can't get over. So anyway, that's just just a few little things, and I have more examples if you want. And I would like to help. I'm not sure if I'm the most qualified person, but I thought it was for a citizen making a viewpoint. And so I always have good ideas, and I have a positive approach to everything, and I think the growth in the town, whether it's residential or commercial, is great. So I want a win for the people, a win for the town, and a win for the builder. I'm a great researcher, and I will look into things, and I have a lot of people in industry and contacts that I would even consult with that I know that would help me, because I have just have a lot of people that I know. And so that's pretty much what I was going to say. So thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, thank you for for applying. I appreciate it. You seem like a great person. Welcome to Plymouth.
Thank you.
And as you can tell, you heard me, I, you know, I'm kind of an honest guy, and I tell exactly what I think. This is a very important, very important board, the building committee, because they oversee when new buildings, like, for instance, we get two fire stations that are recently, they're being built, and they they work and improve things and make recommendations to the DPW. And it's it's a very technical job. I mean, I wouldn't be qualified to do it. And so it's not like residential, it's more like town buildings, purchases. And so I I think you're And so I think you might have underestimated the job description. That, that being said, I think you ought to look at some other boards, because it looks like you want to do some community service, and I think that's great. You know, the volunteerism in this town is awesome. So at this time, I think, I don't think you're the most qualified candidate, doesn't mean you're not qualified for something. Go on our town website and see all the boards out there, all the committees, and you should definitely, because you get a lot of energy, you're smart, and, you know, I think you can really help us out in the town. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So are we ready to vote?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I, I'm planning to vote for Ms. Markey, but I, I do appreciate the enthusiasm and the perspective of Ms. Abel. You know, obviously, an architect is hard to pass up for the Building Committee, so it's not anything personal, but I did really appreciate, and I think there is some crossover between your other work in design and this type of thing, that if, this is still something that interests you, you could consider it in the future. But there's like 40, something like 43 boards and committees in town, so if you do want to get involved, I would encourage you to do so, because I think you bring interesting ideas and a fresh perspective, so it's nothing personal, I don't want you to feel that we're, I'm at least picking somebody else over you for anything like that. I did appreciate your presentation, it's just the candidates are who the candidates are, and we have to make the best choice for the town of Plymouth, but, in this instance. But I do appreciate you putting your name forward and putting yourself out there. Thank you.
I think the board's in a very enviable position, because both candidates are eminently qualified, and typically, we don't get this, and I just hope that no matter what happens here, that both of you stay involved in some manner in the community.
Okay. Tracy Markey, Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Canty?
Yes, for Ms. Markey.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four ye, four yes? I figured that, yep. And Mr. Mahoney, one vote for Janice Abel. Thank you very much for both applying, and as Mr. Mahoney said, and Mr. Canty, there's a boatload of committees in town we could use help on, so maybe please reapply. Thank you. Land Use Acquisition Committee, do you have any edits?
Mr. Chairman, we have Catherine Jackson, who I believe is not able to be here with us tonight, either in person or via Zoom. I have a written note that she would like to pass along when we get to that point. We have two full voting seats, one three-year term until June 30th, 2026, one two-year term until June 30th, 2025. There has been a large, large number of folks that were interested in the committee, and as you know, the Land Use Acquisition Committee is comprised of appointed members from a variety of boards and committees, and that committee is kind of restarting, so we're staggering the terms, which is why you get 2025 and 2026.
Okay.
And Bruce Howard withdrew his.
Right, I got, I have that, right. So we actually have Catherine Jackson, who was an incumbent, who was not here, and then Tracy Markeys, and Ethan Warren, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Markeys, would you like to?
I think I would actually like to withdraw.
Withdraw? Right, and that's why I asked you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd make a motion to approve Catherine Jackson and Ethan Warren.
I'll second it.
For which?
Differentiate the terms, right?
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion, my motion would be for Catherine Jackson as the incumbent to get the three-year term that expires June 30th of 26 and a half, and Mr. Warren backfill the two-year term.
And I'll still second it.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yes.
I'd actually like to separate the vote.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mahoney? Would you like to separate them?
Well, I'm looking, we have a list of four. Ms. Markey has just announced that she would like to withdraw. Mr. Howard already communicated that he would withdraw also. He has already previously withdrawn. That leaves us with two seats, a three-year term and a two-year term, and only two individuals here.
Yes, and I can count, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
But as you may all remember from previous episodes of appointment, okay, these forms that people are supposed to fill out are very important to me. Have you read Catherine's?
Okay, yes.
She said she's a member. Nothing about her background, nothing. She phoned it in, in my mind.
Well, she literally did, because he has something to read.
And, and that was sent, yeah, today, so it's a.
Would you mind reading it?
Sure.
For the record, Anthony?
Absolutely.
Okay, please.
The statement is, I would like to continue my work with the Land Use Acquisition Committee. I believe we are just getting started in our work, and we have spent time creating a rubric and connecting with members of other committees to be able to do the best work possible.
Thank you.
Harry, I have no problem withdrawing my motion if you're going to feel better about taking two separate votes. I have no problem doing that.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem. I can vote no that would cover both of them.
Okay.
I mean, if that's, you know, I mean, I think that it's kind of unfair for Mr. Warren, for me to vote no, because I'm voting no on Catherine Jackson. That's just my point. If nobody cares that I'm voting no for one that I would vote yes for, okay, otherwise, because the reality is, that statement was very nice, there's nothing to it. Okay? I could have written the same statement for her, and she chose not to fill out the volunteer application form. And it's, you know, as I've said before, it's extremely important for everybody applying, whether you're an incumbent or not, you know, so that, so that they can be compared to each other, whether you're an incumbent or not.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Blitzer?
So do you want to bring Mr. Warren up? Maybe after you hear him, you might vote no on him too. Do you want to hear him? I wouldn't mind hearing him.
You withdrew your motion, eh, John?
Yes, I withdrew. I don't know who made the second. Okay. Tell him.
Good evening, I'm Ethan Warren. I live at 794 Long Pond Road. I'm a semi-retired attorney. I've known Plymouth all my life, though not been a resident full-time. I visited grandparents during my young years and teens. I remember Cedarville before, the commercial area was there, and there was just Bruno's Corner and a, and a one-stall volunteer fire department. I moved here in the late 70s, just out of college with my wife. Lived here for three years. Started renting a summer cabin after I moved away in 1980. Was lucky enough to buy that in 1983. I've been coming down for summers all through my life, and finally, in 2020, got to move back here. I became a member, a town meeting member in 2022, was re-elected in 2023. I would, I know a lot about 61B, which I think is where a lot of the land use acquisition work is. In fact, 40 of my acres of my summer cabin is under 61B. I've been involved in some properties that come out. I've worked with Lee Hartman and Patrick Farah. With Lee, I helped some TDR property held by a bankrupt corporation get out of the bankruptcy court and into the title of the Conservation Commission. I was also involved with my mother and my uncle, as the attorney, and go between with Patrick Farah donating 35 acres to the Conservation Commission. And I like to bring some of my skills and whatever I can do to land acquisition committee.
Mr. Blitzer?
That's impressive, Ethan, and we can probably use your expertise. The TDR is something that I think at some point we could use your expertise on, but, you know, being an attorney, again, you're an asset, you've got a history in this town, you know this town, and thank you for your service, and I think you're going to be a great asset for this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you, sir. Charlie, Mr. Blitzer, would you like to withdraw it? Second to John's motion, he withdrew his motion.
Yes, I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. So now we're going to have the vote for the three-year term. Catherine Jackson? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
No.
So we have four in favor, including myself, and one no by Mr. Helm. Now, the two-year term? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes, for Mr. Warren.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five votes. Thank you very much for applying and serving the community. I'm sure you'll all enjoy it. Boarding committee assignments for the select board. Does Anthony put it in that packet?
Mr. Chairman, while you're looking through your packet, for the folks that are listening at home and that have been appointed or in the room today, you're going to be receiving an email from the town clerk's office outlining conflict of interest forms and being sworn in at the town clerk's office. And I have all that information as well. And for folks that are also listening at home, if you're interested in any of the boards and committees, there is a page on the town's website under the Government tab outlining some of the opportunities to volunteer. There's about four or five so far, which is actually pretty good for, all things considered, for 40 boards and committees.
Thank you very much. Okay, you got the memo? Date of July 20th, from Anthony? Are there any questions or comments, interest in anything that's up, wanting to be up? Mr. Helm?
Well, I know that there's no name, the first one, Affordable Housing Trust, and if no one else is interested, I would take that up.
Is there any other board members interested?
I, I had an interest in it, and I do plan to attend more of their meetings, given the need for affordable housing in the community, but I think Mr. Helm's experience as a real estate agent makes him a better fit for it, so given his interest, I would step aside and just attend as a member of the public at meetings that I can attend.
Thank you. Any other interest or comments? I see the light on John's, I mean, yes?
Are we? All right, so the one, the one that jumps out at me, Mr. Chairman, is the Nuclear Decommissioning Citizens Advisory Panel. Obviously, for the last year or two, I've chaired that. There was a meeting here in the room last night. It was kind of anticlimactic. Obviously, a fair amount of the members or the attendees were happy with respect to the announcement at the state level from the.
Congratulations.
With respect to the million gallons. I know you two to my left have attended the meeting in the past, and we're impressed at how, I don't know how to describe it, but I'll leave it at that. But anyways, having said that.
I was very impressed.
I, I'm looking for a little relief here on this one, and obviously, if Holtech follows through on their public statements with respect to slowing down or even putting a pause on decommissioning for anywhere from three to four years, this panel currently meets every 60 days, certainly, with respect to a slowdown in decommissioning, there would be no reason why that committee couldn't go to every 90 or 180 days. And I'm looking for a little relief here, and I don't know if anybody would like to provide me with that.
This is Kevin Canty.
Yeah, Mr. Canty is, is willing to provide Mr. Mahoney his long-desired relief if no one else is interested.
Yes, all right.
I appreciate that, Kevin, thank you.
Anything else, John?
No, I'm good with the, I'm good with the other couple I have, and I have an update on one of them later on, on their old new business.
Okay. Mr. Blitzer?
So we're going to go right down the list here. Right, capital improvements, John?
I'm good. I'll take that, yep.
Cemetery is you, Dicky.
Yep.
Center of Active Living is Harry.
Yeah, but I'm not sure why there's a question mark next to my name, Anthony.
Or is it now?
I didn't confirm that you were indeed the, the person that was assigned to it, so.
Okay. I was just kind of wondering.
Yep.
So I guess where I'm going with this is if there's no other changes other than those two, we just take them as a slate.
I'd like to, I'll take the Harbor Committee, Betty's gone.
Did I miss something right here? Oh, yeah, interest, Charlie Blitzer.
I make a motion, the White Horse Beach Parking Committee, that we leave Betty on that.
No, she's busy at CPC right now. So that's Charlie. Okay, that's the third one. Well, White Horse Parking Committee, was Betty.
May I, may I request to be the liaison with the White Horse Beach Parking Committee?
I could think of no one better, Mr. Helm.
Right.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm thrilled to be in this position.
So that's one. So as we look at the slate, we have four, four changes. Affordable Housing will be Harry Helm. Harbor Committee will be Charlie. Nuclear Decommission Citizens Advisory Panel will be Kevin Canty, and White Horse Beach Parking Committee will be Harry Helm. I think I read a mic, and if I do, if we can, did I miss one?
The South Shore Community Action Council is Charlie, there's interest, Kevin has interest.
Oh, right here.
I don't know if the two of you have talked about it.
I am interested in, I am interested in South Shore Community Action Council, if Mr. Blitzer doesn't mind, unless he.
No, it's fine, Kevin, I just don't want you taking on too much.
There's a lot.
So I'll stay on it, I'd be glad to, it's a, it's a very important board, but if you want it, go for it, but it is, it's a great board.
And Mr. Blitzer, in regards to the Plymouth County Advisory Board, is that one?
Oh, yeah.
That's one that you?
Yeah, the Advisory Board, which one is that?
Plymouth County Advisory Board, one, two, fifth doc.
Yeah, I'd like to be on, I'd like to be on that, if I could. I think I'm the only one who likes to count on this board.
You are.
Yeah, so.
There's always one.
Makes sense.
Wait a minute, where's that one?
It's, it's normally been the chairman, but.
Yeah, the Nuclear Decommissioning?
Yeah.
It's that little dot, Plymouth County Advisory Board? Formerly vacant?
It wasn't vacant.
It was. Betty didn't, I don't think she served on it last year.
Betty assigned me to that. It was not vacant.
Okay.
Okay, correct for the record, and I am interested in that.
You are interested in that?
Yes, I am.
Let's have a throwdown.
All right.
I want to see that. Take it out there.
No.
No. No, I'm here when you need me, that's all.
Well, how about we split it? If I can't go, you go.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Any other changes? One, two, I know you just got in trouble again, three and four. Just make sure I get all this right. No, it's five. Two, three, four, and five. Five changes. Correct? You have a motion to move on?
Move approval with the noted changes.
Have a second?
Second?
Second. Motion by Mr. Mahoney. Second by Mr. Canty. Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Public comment? Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, Russell Brewster, Chair, Precinct Fifteen. Just want to give some concerns and some facts. I was going to give these at the beginning of the ZBA appointment, but I can understand why the chair couldn't allow me to speak. In reference to the emails and the concerns that you get from the public, I would say that they were concerned that any developer on the ZBA is a conflict of interest, and they would have concerns about any developer. And I, in watching what went on, the developer walked up and was welcomed to the podium and was shown his accolades, shown how great he is, showed how awesome he's been for the community. The second guy got up and was met with hostility. I just have great concerns that you've put something, someone into position of the ZBA, and if you want to talk about bump rock road fiasco, the reason that the people who were fighting this and taking it to court stopped is they ran out of money. So, what you're putting into the ZBA is somebody who has a lot of money and gets what he wants. And the intent of that covenant that was thirty years plus was to keep that an open space. That's why your Planning Board Director and the then head of the Planning Board objected vehemently to this being broken. It set a precedent because when they make a covenant, when the town makes a covenant with an individual or a bunch of people, that's an agreement forever. And basically, what the Planning Board did was break that covenant, break that trust. So, what it opens up is any other covenant, any other agreement, that's like saying to the public, yeah, we might do it, we might not do it. It's also very interesting to me that one of you recused himself. I just am very concerned that you just put somebody on the ZBA who has a very big conflict and has shown that he's interested, he's a developer, and he's going to develop things, and that's his job. But he's interested in developing. He's not interested in the town. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Anybody waiting, Anthony? No. Department of Public Works, presentation?
Hi, I'm Sheila Scarsi, Acting DPW Director. Thanks for taking the time for DPW tonight. We have a couple of projects we want to talk about, and then at the end, we can take a Q and A, pretty informal, on any other projects you may be interested in hearing a status update on, thinking you might want to hear about the Water Street Sewer Interceptor Project, Brick Road Bridge, maybe the Route Eighty Sidewalk. So, we'll keep it open. We have a lot of projects in DPW, so if we were to go into every single project, I think we'd be here all night. So, try to keep it brief. We're going to start out with the cemetery. We have with us tonight Diane McGuire, who's our Acting Cemetery and Crematory Superintendent. We also have Michelle Newell, who's our DPW Safety Officer. Diane's going to give an update on the proposed cemetery rules and regs changes, and we can also talk about the status of the Route Eighty Cemetery project. Diane?
Good evening. Sheila mentioned, I'm Diane McGuire. In April, I was appointed the Acting Superintendent of the Crematory and the Cemeteries. At the July fourteenth meeting of the Cemetery Commission, a vote was taken to prohibit certain items within town-owned cemeteries. It passed unanimously. Based on this, on page five of the Rules and Regulations, we have updated the prohibited items to include shepherd's hooks, loose stones, and any glass items placed on graves. After discussions with the Town Safety Officer, Michelle Newell, these items have been deemed unsafe for visitors and staff. Included in your packet is a memo from Michelle with details of these safety hazards. Note that the town is responsible for following OSHA rules. Acting DPW Director Sheila Scarsi and I have also approved these recommendations. If approved by the Select Board, the items mentioned will no longer be allowed in town cemeteries effective immediately. We recognize that this may be an unpopular and emotional issue for a lot of our lot owners, and we will give them ample opportunity to remove the items within a reasonable time period. Once this time has passed, the items will be marked and kept on site for a short amount of time before eventually being discarded. Michelle is here to answer any safety questions, and I can answer any procedural questions. The Rules and Regulations are approved by the Board, and this is the first update in several years.
Mr. Canty?
Can you expand upon loose stones? What do you mean by prohibiting loose stones?
The public has taken to putting borders with loose, small rocks or shells or broken down pieces of glass, et cetera. These can get caught in the lawnmowers and be shot out of the lawnmowers.
So, these are stones put on the ground?
It's not put on the ground, like, it's not put on the headstones, it's put actually on the ground. We have some families who will come and decorate the graves with loose gravel, loose stones.
Okay, so what, in some traditions, there's traditions of putting stones on headstones?
Right.
Is that, that would still be a permitted use?
We do have a small Jewish section, and we do have people put stones on those. We have asked that they make sure that they're on the stones. Occasionally, we do have to go through those sections and remove the stones that have fallen. We place them in a, they're, they're put in a bucket and put at the top of that section. So, we are still allowing that tradition, but they're not to be placed on the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? And is that the meeting, and I'm the board's representative on this committee? And like the shepherd hooks and stuff, you're going to label them and number them, so if somebody comes to their loved one's site, they'll be able to?
Absolutely.
So, if you could just touch on that a little bit, so?
Sure, absolutely.
People watching will, you know?
Right, so we're going to put it on our webpage, of course, but we're also going to have, like, the mailers you'll get on your door sometimes. We're going to have some of those made, and we will be placing them on the shepherd's hooks themselves with notice saying, you know, they're going to have ample opportunity, and as we see them, we will approach them as well. We will get, I expect some pushback on this, of course, but it's truly a safety issue for both our staff and for the public. We see a lot of broken glass and items that, if you look in other cemeteries, you will see that they're not allowed. We've been pretty liberal in what we've, what we've put through. Michelle did a good job in her memo explaining the safety issues that we have with that. And our workers have asked for quite a while for us to particularly get rid of the shepherd's hooks because they fall and they get caught in their, their lawnmowers are big industrial lawnmowers, they can't even see them. And if they're left for a long period of time, they rust, they fall over. So, and they will be having ample opportunity to remove them. We won't just be going off next week and discarding them, absolutely.
I mean, I was paying attention, but if somebody's watching, I just wanted them to know, you know?
Sure.
They're probably asking themselves.
You know, I expect we will, I will be an unpopular person in the cemetery office for quite a little while, but we will do our best to make sure that they understand the reasons behind it and also that their items are returned.
I mean, in some of the things, like the shepherd's hooks, that's OSHA mandate, right? The town would be liable if somebody was to get hurt, and people have gotten hurt on them already.
They are. Yes.
And the last question I'm going to have, could you just tell us where we are on the Route Eighty Cemetery?
Sure.
What's going to happen, because we're talking about that briefly tonight.
Sure.
We can talk about the sidewalk, too. The Route Eighty Cemetery project, we invited two consultants to submit proposals. Both of these consultants had worked on conceptual designs and studies in the past for this particular cemetery. So, we thought that it was fitting to invite them to submit proposals. We have interviewed both consultants. We've asked both of them to come back and refine their proposals. We've made a few changes. I think originally, this went to town meeting with design up to ten acres of space, and we still want to do that schematic design up to ten acres, but in talking this through with the consultants and with Diane, we feel that three acres is the actual amount of space we should be pursuing for design and construction. That's going to get us about twenty, twenty-five years? Twenty-five years of space. And then the idea would be, well, there's a schematic plan available for the next generation to plan out the next section of the cemetery. So, we're waiting for both consultants to submit their updated scopes, so we're comparing apples to apples, and we're hoping to make a decision by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And then we're going to start a schematic design, and then we'll get right into an archaeological investigation out there.
So, we're down to three acres right now that we're going to be planning, but we're going to look long-term, I hope?
Yes.
So, another board member that's sitting here years from now.
Exactly.
Isn't faced with what we just were faced with.
Right, so we don't feel it's the responsible way to go in and design and construct ten acres right now when three acres is projected to get us out twenty, twenty-five years. So, we don't want to clearcut the land and have it sit barren for that long.
Absolutely. And I hope we do it creatively, so we do have some trees and.
Exactly.
You know, I know it's, but it does look nice, and it helps people with the nature and resiliency, you know, step in the right direction, so.
Yeah, we had discussions with both firms on that, on keeping it aesthetically pleasing, but also functional for us to maintain.
That's it, yes.
So, it's a balance there.
Yep. Thank you. Any questions for Miss Scarsi? Okay.
Okay, so next, we can go into the Manomet Pressure Zone Water Main Improvement Project. We've got Peter Gordon here, our water superintendent.
Do you need a vote on the new regulations for the cemetery?
Oh, yes, sorry, you're right. You're right, we do.
Okay. Did anybody know what happened to Mr. Blitzer?
I don't think we want to know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you hear ambulances, then we'll know. I move that we approve the changes to the cemetery rules for safety reasons.
Second?
Second, discussion? Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mr. Blitzer, Mark is missing. Thank you. Miss Scarsi?
Okay, so next, we can go into our Manomet Pressure Zone Water Main Improvement Project. This project has been in the works for a couple of years now. We've got Peter Gordon, our water superintendent, here tonight. We also have our design consultants, Weston Sampson. I think we have Mike Warner and Darwin Sevalas with us via Zoom. So, they're going to take us through a few slides, and we can talk about the project. We're also planning to present a slightly different version of this to the Manomet Village Steering Committee on August third. We're hoping to draw in residents of Manomet in that meeting, so we can do more of a Q and A of what they're going to expect with this project. So, Pete, do you have anything you want to say before we? Okay, so I think we can go into the PowerPoint presentation. I see Mike Warner there. So, Mike?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm presenting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe I have control of the PowerPoint, Mike, so you can ask me to advance slides.
Okay. Let me just make sure I am, you're not seeing anything right now, right? So, let me just.
Correct, we're just seeing you. We're not seeing any presentation. Oh, now we are.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Sheila mentioned, my name is Mike Warner from, I'm the project team leader from Weston and Sampson, and with me on the call, too, I believe, is Darwin Sevalas, the project manager. And we're talking to you about the Manomet Pressure Zone Water Main Improvements Project. And as, as next slide, if you don't mind, as Sheila mentioned, this project has been in the works for a little while. I think some of you may have know a little bit about the project, but just as a, as a little heads up and a little background, a water capital improvement program plan was created and determined that there was a need for some improvements in the Manomet Pressure Zone area to increase resiliency, to increase redundancy of the system, and to maintain adequate system pressures. And it outlined twenty-one thousand, over twenty-one thousand linear feet of water main that should be replaced, either eight-inch or twelve-inch pipe that should be replaced or improved upon. And I think it's eight streets within the Manomet Pressure Zone area, or the Manomet area of town. The, you can see here on the map and the list of streets listed. One thing to note that after the water main is replaced, the trench will be paved, but then following, the following year after a set of criteria, the contractor will be going in and doing, performing a full mill and overlay paving on the roads within the project. And so, right now, the project was bid, I believe it was March or April, the project was bid, and the low bidder was MDR Construction Co. And we have yet to sit down with them to understand exactly all of who they're going to be using and their pre-construction information, but they will be utilizing a subcontractor for some of the utility work, and that's KJS. And so, also on this slide, just wanted to point out the project team, you know, myself and Darwin from Weston and Sampson, but just want to note that Sheila, Peter, and Kendra from the town have been instrumental in assisting on this project. So, we wanted to just remind folks that during construction, there will be impacts to the residents and any visitors of town during construction. There are typical traffic delays and road closures, and there, and some of the residents may see some water disruptions, but that we would, that obviously, we will work with the contractor to make sure that these are at a minimum. But did want to point out that access to residents will be maintained during construction, and obviously, emergency vehicles and personnel will also be maintained. But we ask, obviously, the residents and the public, we ask for patience during the construction period, which, as I mentioned, we are in the process of scheduling the pre-construction meeting with MDR and their representatives to determine their exact, or determine their starting point. But right now, it's anticipated that construction. But right now, it's anticipated that construction will start sometime in October. So the fall of this year. And that it would extend through 2025. But I would point out that the majority of the water main work would occur, would occur next year in 2024. And that 2025 timeframe would be when the, would likely be when the overlay paving occurs. Typical construction hours are expected, 7:00 to 3:30, with, you know, likely some extended hours if needed for that specific work. And again, we haven't yet determined what their exact plan is. But there's the potential, because there is some work being done, some tie-ins being done in Route 3A. And there's a Mass DOT permit that was obtained that has certain requirements. So there might be some night work that might have to occur, some weekend work. But that would be coordinated with DPW and the town and police and fire and whatnot. And that there would be public notification performed, sent out prior to any of that work occurring. Quick view on funding breakdown was just that there's, it's just under $9 million for engineering and construction costs. And I haven't yet noted, but on this slide, you can see that there's, we have an EDA grant line. And so a portion of this funding for the project is being funded by a grant through the Economic Development Administration, which is a bureau of the, was it the Labor? Sorry, Department of Commerce. So there's a portion of it being funded by the EDA. And the rest of it has been appropriated under, with town funding. And just lastly, our contact information is here for Weston and Sampson, for Mike, for myself, Mike, and Darwin. I did want to point out that there is, down on the bottom, you can see we, there is a project website that's been set up for the job, for the project, that we will be making updates to and putting important updates and construction scheduling on. There's a link, or there's a spot where you can sign up for a newsletter that we will be publishing. So we would encourage members of the public to go to the website and sign up for the newsletter if you're at all interested in staying up to date, or check the website. And there's some QR codes that can be scanned. We can certainly send those around if needed. And then I think, I was in the middle of transitioning in Zoom land, but I think I heard Sheila say that there is a Manomet Steering Committee meeting next week on Thursday. So I encourage, if there's more questions, people could attend that meeting as well. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Mahoney?
Excuse me. Sheila? So we know there was a drought in the summer of 2016. We know that, I think there was more than one time that the Manomet well went down to a unsatisfactory level. And so overall, what is this project going to do for redundancy in building safety and security in the system?
Well, we're replacing, I think, all of the pipes are cast iron. They're all, I believe, at least 80 years old. They're tuberculated, which means they've developed a crust inside. So they don't have the full carrying capacity. So we're replacing them. There, it's time to replace these pipes regardless. But in terms of system redundancy and system performance, we're going to have diminished pressure fluctuations in that pressure zone. Our wells aren't going to have to pump as hard. Pete, I don't know if you want to get up and talk a little bit more about the hydraulics to give an explanation of exactly what's going to happen.
You know, to answer your question somewhat more specifically, this project isn't going to increase our capacity in the zone?
You're correct.
It's not going to really do anything for our wells specifically.
Right.
But what it will do is allow them to work not quite as hard. We'll fill the tanks a lot easier. And this, like she said, this reduced friction throughout the pipes. And these pressure spikes will allow us to pump water more efficiently, fill the tanks far more efficiently.
So I think you had a map up there. And in yellow was the outlines of what's being replaced, correct? So that was roughly, what, 21,000 linear foot?
Yeah. So it's close to four miles, which is why we're presenting to you. Normally, we don't present when there's a water main project. It's pretty standard. But there's eight roads impacted and their main thoroughfares in Manomet. You've got White Horse Road, Manomet Point Road, Bartlett Road, and Olive Brook Road. So, and we still have to have that initial pre-construction meeting with the contractor to understand what their plan is. It's possible they may have multiple crews going on different roads, similar to what we did with the Jacket Water Main Project about eight years ago. We replaced Jacket Water Maines. It was a little over three miles a pipe all over town. We had multiple crews going. At one point, we had three different water main crews on three different roads. So this is a big project just because of that scale. So that's why we want to get the word out about it, because it has potential to be disruptive. Actually, the way the timing worked out, where we're not going to get started in the fall, I think helps. Per the EDA grant, originally, we were supposed to have started the project prior to August. And we've gone through a lot of back and forth and paperwork with them. We just got a contract amendment to start later. And part of that was due just to all the red tape involved in managing that EDA contract that had a lot to do with the delays, as did just, again, supply chain delays we've been experiencing since COVID.
Okay. One more question, and I don't know if you have the answer here. But after this project is done in that area, is there still pipes left over that are of the age of 80-plus years? Is there still work to do with respect to upgrading more pipes down there?
There is. So we already have plans to add another street onto this project, Sammaset Ave in Manomet. That's got an old cast iron main on it. We need to repave that road. We also need to do drainage. So we're going to add that into this project so we can get our other work done on that road. So we're looking at that as, you saw, the bid price came in quite a bit lower than we had estimated. So the bid price is, came in at 7.3 million. We have the total funding, 14.6 million. So we're in really good shape in terms of funding for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Sheila, one of the affected roads is Brook Road. Obviously, that has the bridge. What is the, what is, what if any interaction does the pipe that's being replaced have with the existing bridge?
Yeah. So I can dovetail into a Brook Road Bridge update, because it is impacted. So the Brook Road Bridge Project, as you know, that's one that's been lingering for a couple of years now. We originally proposed to replace the bridge, went to town meeting a couple of times. It didn't pass town meeting. We listened to the residents. The residents really want to keep the existing bridge. So the decision was made to preserve the existing bridge. It's not a long-term fix. Replacement would get you 75-plus years of lifespan. This preservation project, we're anticipating 15 to 20 years. The past year, we've been working with our consultant, HSH, on the preservation project. And back and forth with MassDOT. We have an existing $500,000 MassDOT small bridge grant for the project. So, but the grant was originally written to replace the bridge. So we had to amend the grant for the preservation. And there's been a lot of back and forth with MassDOT approving the design approach. We finally, last week, got the final okay from MassDOT. However, we needed to make a change to the plan because of the sequence of the water main. It was originally anticipated that this Manomet Pressure Zone project would come ahead of the Brook Road Bridge project. So it was designed and valved accordingly. Now, the Brook Road Bridge project, it's looking like that's going to come first. So we had to change the valving on that Brook Road Bridge plan. So our consultant is doing that this week. We'll resubmit the plan to MassDOT. They need to sign it. And then we're prepared to put that out to bid. So anticipate a bid opening for the Brook Road Bridge project in September. Pending suitable bid results, we want to start construction immediately in the fall. So the Brook Road Bridge project involves replacing beams and also replacing the water main on Brook Road. And so we're going to have it valve so it will be able to tie right in to the existing water main and then tie into the new water main when that comes along.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just have a few. As you're going down these streets, neighbors have to be notified. I mean, it's nice to have a website and all. But I think a physical knock on the door or door hangers, if you will, has to be definitely done. So, because people will just be calling here. They have no water. And, you know, I think I brought this up before. And I even suggested a 911 reverse, like when they have a water break. And I thought we were all in agreement until this past week when we had another water break, which has nothing to do with us, I understand. But this is why I'm bringing this up again, because my phones are ringing. And I didn't call the town manager, and I didn't call you. But I agreed with the residents that. And they said to me, I thought we were going to, I says, well, you know what? I don't know exactly how that was left. So it's very important, we know accidents happen. But alls people want is a reverse call. Or if you don't, can't do that, then you need to send somebody door to door and let them know that they're going to have interruption. And like she said, she had somebody sick in the house and they needed water. And she was very concerned. And I said, you know, call 911 if that is definitely the case. But I just was frustrated that I was having to listen to it again. Not because the people were calling me, but the same issue I thought we talked about and we were going to settle. So that's why I'm saying this again, that when we have a water break or anything of that nature, when it interrupts in service to people, they need to be notified. I mean, that's only right. And it's very important. I think it's going to be very important down here. Although Harry lives right in the helm of all this. So he'll probably be getting, you know, it would be Harry, probably.
So, yeah, actually, when we do have a water service disruption, the first thing we do in the water division is reach out to Anthony to get the word out. So we can always improve our communication. Before we do any project like this, we send out letters to all the residents. So that will be done here. And again, this project, we're going a step above by having an interactive website, just because we feel like some people may want to follow the project. But inevitably, a project like that, this, of this size, there will be water service interruptions. It's bound to happen with this much water main going in the ground. So on these types of projects, it's a little bit different than when we experience a water main break in house. We have a full-time inspector on the job site. Part of that inspector's duties is to go knock on doors when water service is interrupted. And again, we'll, we'll reach out to Anthony. We'll update the webpage. So we'll try to get the word out as best we can. But your point's well taken.
Mr. Helm?
On that point, Sheila, may I suggest that when you meet with the Manomet Village Steering Committee, that group and members can be very useful. They know the contacts of all the HOAs in the area. And there was, there are several that you could, if you know there will be possible service interruptions, for instance, up on Manomet Point itself, beyond Taylor Avenue, that's an HOA. The Dunes Condos down on Taylor Avenue, that's another HOA. They know all of those contacts. And it could be very helpful to reach out. One of the things that I've noticed about town communication, and we've made huge strides in availability of information through Anthony, through the website, yet still people complain that they don't know things. We haven't gone that extra step, in my mind, of projecting the information. We require that people come and get the information. I'm just saying, in terms of this and that area, you might want to talk to, when you're talking with the Manomet Village Steering Committee, they do, they arrange all the information flow for 3rd of July. So they know the HOAs, they know the residents. They could be really useful for projecting that information to people. Just a thought.
That's really helpful feedback. Thanks for letting us know.
Yeah.
It's interesting, when that Cherry Street issue happened on Friday, concurrently, I got a text message about a water main break in Kingston. So, and I don't believe we do that in Plymouth, but that would be an internal discussion. But I found that very useful. At first, I thought it was our Cherry Street water main. I was like, wow, but it was for Kingston. So, I mean, that's a way to get info to people immediately. But people need to sign up with their cell phones.
Okay. So where are we now in water world? Are we well-wise? Are we in good shape? Or?
Yep. So we met internally last week to talk about new source investigations and sites for test well drilling. You may recall, additional money was allocated at Springtown Meeting for test wells. So we met myself, Peter, Kendra, our water and sewer engineer, David Gould, and Kim Tower of Marine and Environmental, and our consultant, Horstley and Witten, to go through the sites, and these were all town-owned sites, that they had identified to talk through, are there any conservation restrictions prohibiting the sighting of a well on the potential sites? So we identified three potential locations, one in West Plymouth, which is our number-one goal, to find something in West Plymouth. So tomorrow, Pete, myself, and our consultant are going to do a site walk to look at the site, see how we can get a well driller in, and move that process along. So, so it's moving forward.
Okay. Well, maybe you can report back to us when you.
We will. Yeah.
In a future day.
So we're excited.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
So Sheila, when you say to, when you say to drill a well, you're talking about a test well that would tell the community how much water could potentially come out from that plot of land?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes. And the one in West Plymouth, we're planning an eight-inch well, an eight-inch test well. So we get a better idea of the production from that location, because that's the one we're, we want to move on the quickest.
Okay. No, that's great news. And I echo the chair. If anything happens, please, you know, keep the board updated. Overall, I should know this, I don't know if I'm getting fatigued going into hour number four or something else. But having said that, we have 13 wells overall currently?
Yes. At 11 different sites.
11 different sites. And we have an aggregate of six in one area and seven in another area? Is that how they're interconnected? Sorry.
It's more like four and, yeah, six. Four and seven. There's one of them that's kind of in between north and south.
Okay. So I guess what I'm leading to is ultimately is this, the long-term goal is to make it one giant system, correct or no?
Okay. So there's pros and cons to that concept. So we've been debating this internally ever since that draft master plan came out in 2019. A precursor to connecting the pressure zones is actually this Manomet Pressure Zone Water Main Project. But as I said, there's pros and cons to doing that. In some cases, you'll be triple pumping the water to move it. And you still have the restrictions in terms of pipe size. You can only move so much water. Also, that may, if you do connect the pressure zones, there's a lot more red tape for Pete to manage in terms of sampling. So there are definite benefits to keeping the pressure zone separate. However, it would be a way to move water from the eastern pressure zones into the northern pressure zones. So it is certainly still on the table. That project would involve a water, a whole new water main on Rocky Hill Road. That project would involve a water, a whole new water main on Rocky Hill Road and booster pump station.
Nope, I remember that one from a few years ago. I just didn't, you know, I'll let the experts determine what direction the town goes in.
It's still on the table, but we want to look at these well sites first.
Yeah. Nope. That sounds great. Very quickly, could you just give us a quick synopsis? It looks like we, you did a great job with your support staff in regaining our footing down there in Water Street, especially in May and June and, you know, ahead of the summer holiday. What's the percentage of how much of that pipe actually was completed? Where do we stand as a potential restart down there? And, you know, could you speculate on, in a perfect world with weather conditions, how much longer would it would take the contract to completely finish?
So we've got Doug Pennard, our wastewater manager here as well, so I'm sure he may want to say a few things. I've been saying we're close to halfway done. I think I'm being a little optimistic with that. It's over a third done. What is the exact footage?
Well, yeah, it's just over there.
Yep. When Northern restarted, you saw they gained ground very quickly. They got a lot done in a short amount of time. It was a very impressive effort where we've, we heard, we realized everybody from the town was impacted by that project. The residents, the business owners, tourism. So we heard it loud and clear that resuming the project may be best to wait till after Thanksgiving. It just so happens that that works out best for Northern as well. So the current plan is to resume construction after Thanksgiving. We think we can get it done within a couple months, but then there's going to be putting everything back together and we need to let the road settle out. We have sidewalks that need to go back in. So we're going to wait till probably the fall of 2024 to do all the final paving and restoration. But if everything goes well, they should be in and out of there by winter.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Doug Pennard, wastewater superintendent. Northern did, I think, a great job in a short period of time. Like Sheila said, we're projecting somewhere around Thanksgiving or thereafter. Weather permitting, if they have the same production, I would imagine they would have the same outcome where maybe a couple of months. Obviously, as they move south, we will have another bottleneck somewhat where we have to do some bypassing and things like that, which will slow the project down a little bit. But we just do have some, some footage there where we can make up some good ground in a short period of time. So I'm projecting that it should go well.
Thank you.
So, and just anecdotally, I think it was June, June 6th, maybe June 9th, we had a sewer force main break at our Home's Point Sewer Pump Station. That's a cast iron sewer pipe. So we responded to that. Actually, Northern came in and helped us out with that. They were working on Water Street and came right in, worked all night, helped us out. That pipe, and it's a different type of pipe, but that force main was installed under the same contract as the Water Street, the existing Water Street Sewer Interceptor that we're trying to replace. So that sewer force main that broke at the Home's Point Pump Station, we were scheduled to actually inspect that this year, broke before we inspected it, but we're preparing to, we're preparing a bid and design package to line that pipe because it's in rough shape.
Hi, Sheila. I got a question, and I probably should know it, but since the stoppage, when they, when they restarted, did the plan change the way they were laying the pipe? Did they not go as deep? Because it seems to be going a little smoother. What, what, has anything changed in the way they're doing it?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope. It's getting shallower as we go down the road.
Okay, it's getting shallow.
I think they got into sync. They did change out their project superintendent, so the management of the day-to-day construction changed a little bit. And they were incredibly productive and it was very impressive that they got it all done by the deadline.
So it might have been Northern, it might have been, but the ground's getting shallower. And is that, so do you think that, do they anticipate that the rest of the way, which might make it a little quicker or a little smoother?
I believe, we still have to work through this with Northern, but de-watering will need to continue, as we go down the street. The level of de-watering and the number of wells, we need to work through with them in the coming months before we remobilize.
Okay. All right, well, let's keep my fingers crossed. Anyway, thanks. Thank you.
So, you know, also on the agenda, just said DPW project updates. I started going through our projects. I got four divisions in. I was up to 45 projects and $68 million between capital and grant ARPA funds. So as I mentioned earlier, I think we'd be here all night if I went through every project. But if there's a specific project you have an interest in, I think we've hit Brook Road, Route 80 Cemetery, the Water Street Sewer Interceptor, but we have, you know, I got to 45 and four divisions in and I stopped. So we have quite a few projects in the queue here in DPW. Another one that's about to go out to bid next week is Stevens Field, so that's been a long time coming. So we're very excited to finally have a plan set that everyone agrees on and put it out to bid. Hopefully, we, the pricing is suitable and we can get started on that project in the fall too. But if you have any other projects you want to ask about, I'm certainly here to answer.
No, I don't. I just have one question and that would be for this gentleman. What capacity is the wastewater treatment plant at right now? Are we at 50 or 60 or?
Well, currently, we are in, that's, yeah, it's another update. It's one of, one of our projects that we're going, going through currently with the groundwater discharge. So we do about one and a half million gallons a day and we're trying to get the groundwater discharge up to three million gallons per day. And that's keeping the outfall, but mainly using the sand beds of the treatment plant. So that's just another, one of the updates that we have, or one of the projects that we have, many projects that we have going on at the DPW. So, yeah, we're a little, little, little less than half, I'd say, currently.
Yeah, this is what I was going to ask you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry it's a late hour of the evening, but we appreciate it and-
Thank you. Any other projects or?
No.
Okay.
At the moment, no. Thank you. Town managers report?
Okay, so I'll keep this brief. We've been at this for almost four hours. So I think I just want to start off with a few quick updates. The crossover, I know we, I think a couple weeks back, we talked about the piping plovers at White House Beach and prior to that, we talked about piping plovers over in Long Beach. But we are happy to report that the crossover is now open. Right now, we're receiving what, 50 cars per day. We're hoping by the weekend, we'll have what, 70 cars allowed to be on Long Beach. And then David Gould and his team, they're working on applications to allow for a week of camping overnight on Long Beach to try to, again, allow folks to use that amenity. In large part due to the strong work of Mark Rail, Climate Resiliency Planner, we received a grant around EV charging stations. And so next week, we will install two more EV charging stations right on here, the back lot and the Cornish lot. That'll be a total of four more ports to allow for electric vehicle charging. Just to let folks, let you all know that the Charter Review Committee met last night and they have appointed David Goulden as their chair, Ellen Costa as their vice chair, and Robert Zuparoli as the clerk. So we expect that we will be supporting the Charter Committee the course of their deliberations over the next year or so and providing a lot of technical input into, into that work. And then I think most importantly, as we all heard yesterday and was talked a lot about at the handicap meeting last night, the Department of Environmental Protection has denied the discharge permit that Holtec was seeking. So that's a small win for the town of Plymouth and for the entire Cape Cod region. But again, it's a small win. We still will be waiting patiently for the EPA to rule on the NPT's permit amendment in which Holtec, again, is seeking a similar permission to discharge their contaminated and radioactive water into the Cape Cod Bay. I want to note that when I had a conversation with the commissioner yesterday, I asked whether or not the EPA's ruling would allow for contaminated discharge into the bay, given the DEP's ruling. They don't believe that to be true. So that's positive news that no matter what EPA rules, we still believe that Holtec will not be able to discharge. But again, more to come on that, we'll keep you posted. I want to recognize certainly Senator Soumarin, Representative Matt Mirituri, and Representative Kathy Lanatra. As you all know, and this predates my arrival last year, they had done a lot of work at the State House, working with a number of organizations to advocate on behalf of the town of Plymouth, at the state level, especially with the new governor, to ensure that this ruling did take place. So again, many thanks to the state delegation and as well as the federal delegation as well. So pending any questions, that's all I have. I do want to make one announcement. Tomorrow, this is an invitation to the board, at 2:00 PM, if any board members want to meet here at 2:00 PM, we're going to travel in the downtown area. There'll be some rubber chip seal that will be, that will be laid down in one of our roads. I know the rubber chip seal in the DPW has since left, but rubber chip seal is one of, one of our methods that we use to reconstruct our roads and it is a little controversial, as we've talked about in the past. So those of you that are interested in learning more about rubber chip seal, please come here at 2:00, 2:00 o'clock, and we'll do a little road trip. So again, pending any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for the town manager? Mr. Mahoney?
Derek, I, nothing that you just mentioned, but Sheila had talked about, one of her many projects is Stevens Field. I believe those bids are open in 48 hours.
That's right.
I don't know who will be in the room when they're open, but I would certainly hope that whatever data you have from that bid, you can email immediately to the board.
Sure, we can provide an update.
Tremendous amount of interest in that project and we got our fingers crossed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the town manager? Fall town meeting warrant article discussion.
So this was a request, I think by Select McCanty, who asked to make sure that we place this on the agenda. Like every other board committee, those members go through a discussion, deliberate on whether and what articles they would like to submit on the, on the warrant. So I think this will certainly be here tonight. If there's any articles that the board would like to discuss to place on the warrant, the warrant's open today. All articles will go to Mr. Brothers for warrant construction. And then we'll have one more meeting, the next meeting before the warrant closes is April, August, hold me out, August 8th, August 8th. So the warrant closes on August 11th.
Mr. Canty.
So I don't have a particular article that I'd like to add, but I just, I appreciate that this was put on the agenda because I think, and that's why I read out earlier in the meeting when the warrant deadline was, because we have this relatively new deadline. We already went through one town meeting with it and I think it worked well. But just to put everybody on notice that there is this deadline, because there's a lot of people that wait for these town meetings. They're only six months apart, but they're also, they are six months apart, so depending on what you're looking to do, that can be time sensitive or not. So I don't know if anyone on the board has anything they'd like to see done for this town meeting in particular, but I, I'll be in, I'll be away for the next meeting as I'll be in Asia at the time for the Shishikahama trip. So I probably do the time difference, I probably won't make it, but to that meeting, unfortunately, but I'm interested in hearing if anybody has anything at this point and obviously the board could discuss it at the second meeting as well.
Mr. Blitzer?
It's probably too late to put it together, but I still, it's what I've set up and on the board. And when I was a town meeting member, I wanted it to happen to and it hasn't. But I'd like to put an article together to lift height restrictions on our buildings and our industrial parks. I think the, the height is antiquated. I think we need to go higher. And I don't know if it's 75, 100 feet, but what the height is, but I really think we need to talk with the Economic Development Corporation, you know, and talk to them about the pluses of doing that and the businesses that we could attract if we did that. Because I think we really have to keep trying to get new businesses to come here, office buildings with higher paying jobs. And I think we're not going to be able to do that with the 35-foot restrictions that we have right now. And it would just be in the industrial areas, not in the waterfront, not in the downtown, you know, not, you know, in neighborhoods, but in the industrial areas. So I don't know, you know, Kevin, I don't know if you could help on that or whatever, but I would love to see that happen. I don't know how the board feels about it, but that's something I would like to see happen. Maybe Lee Happ and get him involved too, would definitely need him, need his guidance. So, anyway.
If I could. So the industrial park does have a higher limit presently that was passed. And one of the concerns, I'm not opposed to having higher buildings, but we do need to, we do need to involve the fire department in that discussion for their apparatuses because if you go high enough, that could require you to get a significantly more expensive apparatus to do that. So you just want to make sure that the, that you're involving that in the cost benefit.
I talked to the, when Chief Bradley was in, I asked him about the height restrictions. We tried to do it and we were told that we'd lose the acquaintance of our town and that was just not, just didn't make sense to me. So I asked the chief, is the reason why do we not have the equipment? And he said they didn't. But now with all the engineering that's done to these new buildings, with the fire suppression systems, that they have the apparatus to fight, you know, 75-plus height buildings. So he had no, no concern about that. In the old days, we didn't have the equipment to go that high, higher than 35 feet, but that's not a problem. But we definitely would have to get his official, Neil Chief Foley's official opinion. But I think we have to go to at least 75 feet. I know, I don't know if it's Carver's who went to 70 feet. So, you know, we, if we want to start creating these new companies, businesses like industrial, commercial developments, businesses in office buildings, we need to have higher, higher buildings.
And I remember the discussion about when that was at town meeting and I agree with you, Mr. Blitzer, I think that that's the purpose of these areas of town is for economic development. We're not talking, there was commentary that if we increased it at that time, which was one of the times that it failed, that sooner we'd have, sooner or later, we'd have skyscrapers looming over Plymouth Rock, which is just totally not what was being discussed. So we should be making better use of our economic areas. I think planning is, would need to be looped into this as well as fire, so it may be ambitious to get it done for this town meeting, but I think that's definitely something worth looking at for, to increase our economic development opportunities in the places where we are trying to target that economic development.
I just would, I'll remind the board that, you know, the August 15th- I just would, I'll remind the board that, you know, the August 15th date, we will have a financial workshop, so Ms. Barrett, our finance director, will hold a workshop to talk about, with the board, the financial position of the town, projecting out our revenues and expenses for five years, looking at our ten-year capital improvement plan, and that's gonna be the foundational work for what will revisit our goals, like, just like we did last year in August, and we'll have another workshop at the end of August so that the board can solidify the goals for FY24. So this, the reason why I bring this up as a reminder to the board is that Selectman Blitzer brings up a point of potentially changing the zoning to raise the height restrictions in the industrial park, and I think that if that's the case, it's gonna take considerable amount of research and work to do that, and this may be one of the goals the board decides to place on the FY24 goals and priorities listing, and then this will direct then the planning director to go ahead and start that research.
I agree. I, I think we better take our time with it and, and study it, because a lot more than just the height is the traffic, that's, that's the other big one, what can the roads handle, and the second is to go up and see how much, you know, green space it saves. Maybe our friends we could invite in and have a round table and all sit down and, you know, what's best for Plymouth, and, you know, the fire tax revenue. So I'm, I'm very interested in, in doing that, but I don't know if it can be ready for fall, but it needs to be visited again, and why did it fail last time? I know, Kevin, you touched on it a little bit, but I'd like to see what was proposed and go through the whole, the whole thing, so. Great. Select Board Open Discussion, New Business? John?
So I just wanted to give the board and the residents of the community an update. So the Community Preservation Committee, in effect, is a nine-member baseball team, and to this board's credit, there was a change to the starting lineup approximately a month ago. So I just wanted to let you know that since then, there have been three meetings. And what I have witnessed has basically been a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree change in direction, so since that change, the committee has voted in the affirmative to hold all future meetings at Town Hall so that they can be recorded and the public and committee members could participate remotely if they so choose, and we have done that. We've alternated between the eighteen-twenty courtroom and at this table here. The committee also voted to join or rejoin the statewide CPC coalition. For over a decade, the only committee, community not a member of that coalition was the town of Plymouth. The committee has also voted to use admin funds to hire a support staff of one. I'm guessing you're probably looking in the seven to fourteen thousand dollar a year range. This job description has not been defined yet. Obviously, the town manager has participated in some of these discussions. I believe he will continue to do so. You will probably see human resources showing up at a future meeting and describing the process, but that is basically, right now, a lump of clay that the committee, in conjunction with the town staff, is going to mold into, obviously, stepping into the twenty-first century of modernization and having a proper staff member supporting the committee, just like the planning board does, the zoning board of appeals, and numerous other ones. And then if you're interested in attending the meeting, and we're talking about, it must be Friday, August 11th deadline of getting articles in, the committee will be meeting, I believe, the next three Thursdays in a row. I certainly hope that maybe, I don't think you can be there, we, this Thursday, Derek, but I'm hoping maybe a week from Thursday you can. Remarkably, you're probably looking at, because the committee did not bring any articles to Springtown meeting, you're probably looking at anywhere from seven to eleven articles. Mr. Brothers, I will tell you that we have already voted on a new one. It's remarkable, twenty-two days before the deadline, it was a borderline miracle, but fifty acres of cranberry bogs in West Plymouth for a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We voted in the affirmative, I think it was unanimous last week, so that one should be coming your way. I've already let Mr. Gould know, he's aware, and, you know, just allowing town staff to start knocking these things down and getting prepared ahead of the deadline. We hear from Mr. Canty and his experience on FinCom, so there's been a dramatic improvement, and, you know, I look forward to, you know, seeing eventually what we have, you know, everything that we bring to town meeting.
Any other old, new business? I'm sorry. Mr. Canty?
Pickybacking on the town meeting-related topic, my plan for when we are in town meeting is to attend, to keep up my habit of going to as many caucuses as I have over the last several years as a member of the FinCom, but rather this time do it as a member of the Select Board to be able to answer questions that people have and explain the board's position on anything. I hope I will get support from other board members, and, because some caucuses are happening at the same time, so obviously, I won't be able to be everywhere. But would it be, I don't think the Select Board usually gets FinCom books, the Report and Recommendations book of the Advisory and Finance Committee, there's two different versions of those books in terms of their format. There's the, the version that town meeting members get, which I think is the same version that the Select Board historically got, and then there's the spiral-bound ones that members of the FinCom get, because they're going to the caucuses and they're, they're reviewing those books more frequently, having to ask questions of it. Would it be possible for, I assume the Select Board gets the town meeting version, would it be possible for the Select Board to get the FinCom version? I know we can't give the FinCom version to everyone because it's more expensive, but five more of them wouldn't be a tremendous increase in that. Would that be something we could possibly do? Thank you.
Anyone else have something for new business? Moving right along, letters? Old business? Have a motion?
Take a motion with Chair?
Thank you. Thank you very much for watching. Have a wonderful rest of your week. We'll see you at the next meeting. Good night.